Good evening, everybody. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You young people sure made the Pledge of Allegiance a lot more fun tonight. Good job. Roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill De La Penha?
Present.
Councilmember Angler?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Here.
Mayor McCoy?
Present. No requests for any continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. That will take us to special presentation and I'll switch over to the podium. So tonight, we have two special presentations. The first of our presentation, I'm going to ask Principal Steve LaPire to come on up. Principal, welcome. Also, we have Coach Sean Brosnan and Coach Marty Maciel from Newberry Park High School, and they're going to join me here for special recognition if they could come on up as well. You guys should have sat at the end, it would have been easier. So Mr. Maciel is not feeling well, and we're sorry about that, but we're still going to honor everybody tonight, so I want to read this, so I don't mess it up. "Last Fall, the Newberry Park High School Boys' Cross-Country Team Became Marimanti League Champions After Their Undefeated Season." First of all, clap for that. But it gets better. They subsequently won the CIF Division II Southern Section Championships, and then on November 24th, they earned the title of State Championships after winning the CIF Division II State Meet. Well done. Boys, your hard work and dedication to your sport is to be commended, and we are very proud of your accomplishments. We'd love to hear more about the team and their impressive season, and so what I'm going to do is have you, Principal and Coach, you guys share. Just tell us what it's all about.
Mr. McCoy, council members, on behalf of our Superintendent, Dr. Mark McLaughlin of the Canal Valley Unified School District, and our outstanding school board, it's a pleasure for us to be here tonight. I want to congratulate our boys, not just boys, student athletes, for a tremendous season throughout the entire season. Their hard work, dedication to their craft is an exemplary model for any student here in the Canal Valley Unified School District and anywhere that serves as a model to being not only a student, an athlete, but great community members. And so it's my pleasure to recognize and thank them for such an outstanding season. That started all the way in July, training in the mountains, and then having to deal with the uncertainty of all the fire and fires at everything right in the middle of the CIF Championship Week, and we do appreciate our school district making a lot of concessions to get kids to be able to a place where they can train during that week. So it was a joint effort for the success of all of our students, and it's my pleasure at this point to introduce our head coach, Mr. Sean Brosnan.
Thank you for having us tonight. We are very appreciative of this opportunity. I had the privilege of coaching these eight young men to a state championship, and what an honor it was. You know, we had a motto all season, and we used to say that everybody wants to be great, but very few are willing to be great day in and day out, and these young boys were willing to be great day in and day out. I can tell you, you know, morning runs, getting up at 5:00 a.m., practicing in the afternoon. You know, we have practice six days a week, they run on their own on those Sundays, and I'm more than proud of these boys and what they accomplished. We set a goal and we went out after it, but one thing that I always told the parents and I told the kids and I told the administration was, you know, in order of importance, we need support from the administration, from the parents, then the student athletes, and we had that, and that made a huge difference. This is my third year as a coach at Newberry Park, and I look to, you know, forward to many more years, and I just want to, like I said, thank you for having us, and it's a great honor to be here tonight. Thank you.
Well, we have some certificates of congratulations, first to you, Coach Brosnan. Here you go. That's for you, and if you give this to Coach Maciel, I'd appreciate it. And then all the fellows, come on down to the front if you would. Look at these runner bodies, all skinny. I'm not a runner, you can tell. Whenever I see somebody running, I think their car broke down.
They just dropped the bank.
We'll start off with, this year, we actually, not only did we win the state championship, but we actually competed in the national championships along with 22 other teams invited across the country. We placed sixth place at the national championship, so that's another thing I'm very proud of. But I'm going to start, we were the only team that went to nationals with two freshmen on it, and this is one of my freshmen, great honor to coach him, Daniel Appleford. Only a junior, we'll be glad to have him back next year, Jace Ashburner. Only a sophomore, Nick Goldstein. One of our two seniors that we'll miss a lot, Kendall Long. We'll have him back also, only a sophomore, Thomas McDonald. Our second senior, we'll miss him a lot, Ethan Ronk. Also a freshman, Colin Solomon. And last but not least, only a junior, he was the individual state champion, along with the team state champ with all of us, Nico Young.
For our next presentation, this is going to be an exciting one. You thought that was exciting. This is really cool, because these young folks, boy, did you do the Pledge of Allegiance well. I'm going to clap for that, you did so well. I'd like to invite Colleen Briner Schmidt, representing Unified Association of Conejo Teachers. Come on up here to the podium. Hello, dear.
Hi there.
Nice to see you. On March 2nd, 2019, it will be the 115th birthday of Theodore Geisel, more famously known as Dr. Seuss, the beloved children's writer and storyteller, and to honor his legacy, every year on his birthday, they designate Read Across America Day, and the Conejo Valley Unified School District and the Unified Association of Conejo Teachers co-sponsor this event to promote reading and literacy for all students, and as you notice, I learned how to read, and so that's literacy right there, it works. You can become mayor if you learn how to read. Colleen, can you please tell us more about the program? Welcome.
I can do that, thank you. In May 1997, a small reading task force at the National Education Association came up with a big idea. Let's create a day to celebrate reading. We hold pep rallies to get kids excited about sports and celebrate the winners here. Why don't we do something to get kids excited about reading? We'll call it NEA's Read Across America and celebrate it on Dr. Seuss's birthday. So it was born on March 2nd, 1998, the largest celebration of reading this country has ever seen. Motivating children to read is an important factor in student achievement and creating lifelong successful readers. Research has shown that children who are motivated and spend more time reading do better in school, and they fall in love with books. As I was growing up, my parents gave me a safety flashlight that I actually use to read under the covers at night. However, I was discovered and they took the flashlight away. However, I discovered that if I sat in the window just right, I got enough light from the streetlights to read, and so I did. No child stays up late, excuse me, no child stays up late at night to read a reading workbook, but those who have been exposed to wonderful stories that take them all over the world, activate their imaginations, and teach them to dream, sitting on the laps of their parents, grandparents, older brothers and sisters, or in front of the classroom with the teacher, these students are well on their way to becoming great readers. This week, teachers all across the district are celebrating reading, and on March 2nd, and every day actually, we would like you to celebrate reading and reading aloud, joining educators, parents, and community leaders across the country, and celebrate the magic of reading. Because you're never too old, too wacky, too wild, to pick up a book and read with a child. And I would like to introduce Mrs. Jill Raff of Weathersfield Elementary School, who has brought some members of her class to help us celebrate.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. We have been working really hard for a couple of weeks, learning a song to celebrate reading, and this week, we're actually doing a different Dr. Seuss book every day, so all the students in my class have been learning and reading with Dr. Seuss.
While the kids are setting up, I just wanted to say to you, Ms. Colleen, my dad was deployed, I don't remember reading with him, he was always in the military, and my mom was busy with four kids, and it was a teacher, Mr. Wolken, who gave me a love for reading, and what you all do day in and day out is so wonderful for our community, and we're just so grateful. And this is for all of you, it's a proclamation, and we're grateful, so thank you so much.
You're quite welcome, thank you.
All right, you guys are in for a treat, so cheer these kids on, this is going to be wonderful, check it out. You guys ready? Goodbye, you guys. See you later. Thanks, parents. Madam Clerk, if you would do the public comments, please.
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on the subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Before individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Our first speaker tonight, JD Slacher. I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Come on down. I'm sorry? Slacker. All right. Thank you for your understanding. Welcome. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, City Council, for having me. This is my second time addressing you as a whole. I was here on January 8th to speak about the book that I'd finished writing in honor of my best friend, Luke Bodden, who passed away from sickle cell disease. My book is called Moonflower. It's available on Amazon. And I also lost my home in the Woolsey Fire three weeks after it was published. And since that moment, I've been raising as much money as I can through my book sales in a campaign called Moonflowers for Malibu. So I'm back tonight for two reasons. The first being, as I've been on this journey with the book, taking it all over the country to speak to as many people as I could about the story about my best friend, I've had the fortunate side effect of meeting what I call all of the other Lukes out there in the world, little kids who have illnesses, terminal or chronic. And one of them was a very sweet little girl named Teresa Alanaze, who I've started a fundraiser for. And here's a picture of her and I. And my ask is just that I bring her story to light as much as possible and help spread her message as well. And she's in an extreme position of need, like a lot of little kids that I meet are. And so if you find it in your interest to donate, that would be great. But really, more than anything, I just want to spread her story and give you guys all the information on her to see if there's anything that you guys can do, knowing the people you do. I think that would be great. The second reason I'm here tonight is because I'm having a fundraiser in this city on March 3rd for the fire victims. It's my final cap to the fundraiser through my book sales. It's going to be a Red Cross sanctioned event where I'll be doing my final donation on my book sales to the Woolsey Fire victims. And also, a percentage of that will be going to the victims of the borderline shooting. So I'm trying to raise as much awareness for that fundraiser as well, and I happily invite all of you guys to attend. And I have a flyer for that as well that I'll show you. And I'm gonna be passing both of these out with all of my information at the conclusion of my speech tonight. But I, again, just wanted to thank you for all you do for our city, and also for putting me in touch with Heather Cousin last time I was here. And we've organized an event, I believe, for April with my book, where I'll be working with the Thousand Oaks Library. And, you know, once again, I appreciate all that you guys do for our city and for these victims on a daily basis. This is just my way of kind of complimenting that. So I have all this information for you, and I hope to see you on Sunday, March 3rd. Thank you.
JD, if you would, tell everybody where it's gonna be and what time it starts.
Yeah. It's gonna be at Mexico Grill and Tequila Lounge, and that's 29008 Agora Road in Agora Hills, California. And it's gonna be Sunday, March 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM.
Perfect. JD, thanks again for all you do, man.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Skip Roberts. Maria Ventura, you'll be after Mr. Roberts, just to let you know. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Skip Roberts, Newberry Park. After that great presentation on reading, I thought I might read a few comments this evening. I'm here to speak about the Clean Power Alliance. I did receive my mail notice for that program on January 11th for the February start date informing me that CPA was buying electricity supply. Now, I think the last time that California decided to buy electricity supply was from a Houston company called Enron, but be that as it may. There was no mention in my notice of the 5% to 7% increase in the monthly charges to allow me to participate in CPA. The notice does state that if I'm currently enrolled in Southern California Edison Alternative Rates, CARE or FERA programs, those Edison rates, subsidized rates, will continue with my CPA. However, there was no mention of any 5% or 7% discount from CPA for their added-on charges, which is what I understand that they're gonna be billing for. My simple question this evening is can somebody, council member or staff, find out from the private CPA Corporation Board of Directors if CPA intends to discount their added-on 5% to 7% charges to the Edison subsidized CARE and FERA participants? Finally, I am surprised that the Sacramento legislators and city council members did not consider the regressive nature of the 5% to 7% add-on fees, costs, taxes, whatever you want to call them, that hit everyone but will be especially hard for the lower-income residents that may not qualified or may not be enrolled currently in CARE or FERA. I did have some additional comments this evening, but my wife is my editor, and she urged me strongly to remove those comments from my speech. Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, our city manager will address that at the end of the public comments, and he'll have some answers for you. And I think our wives are related.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Maria Ventura. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, council members, and city staff, and residents and businesses of Thousand Oaks. My name is Maria Ventura. I'm the Public Affairs Manager representing SoCal Gas throughout Ventura County. And I'm here to provide you some information about natural gas's role in a renewable future. As you may know, natural gas is used to heat homes, cook food for the residents, and also in many industrial processes. It is abundant, cost-effective, and a clean energy source. Most of the homes here in Thousand Oaks and businesses have electricity and also have natural gas. That is balanced energy. I'd like to alert you today that there are those in Sacramento who would like to upset that balanced energy approach and electrify everything under the guise of trying to reach greenhouse gas emissions and to benefit the environment. While that goal is a goal we can all support, seeing the children earlier today, we want a, we want a good, clean, wonderful world for our children and our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. But there are other options that are less impactful than electrifying, mandating folks to electrify everything. There was legislation last year that would have required by 2022, all new homes, all new buildings to be all-electric, and by 2030, all buildings would have been retrofitted to be all-electric. While this bill did not ultimately pass in its original form, please know that more bills like this are forthcoming, taking away individuals' rights and choice to decide what kind of energy source they would like to use. There are other options. And please know, SoCal Gas is not against electrification. If somebody would like to do that, it is their choice, what energy choice they would like to use. But there are other options. Power to gas is basically, in a very nutshell, my quick time here, is we can harness the energy of wind and solar, do some conversions, and put that in our pipeline, and in essence, we have created a battery. And also, renewable natural gases, we capture methane from our best friends, the cows, and also other waste streams, wastewater treatment facilities, that sort of thing. We can capture that methane before it goes up in the air, it's carbon negative at that point, and clean it and put it in our pipelines. If we use all the tools in our arsenal to address the, our leading, we are in California, climate goals, that is the best approach without having less impact, less cost. And let me be clear, it would have cost an individual $7,200 at minimum to upgrade the electrical panel, replace all their appliances, if this bill had been passed. What I'm saying here is, let's use all the tools we have and not rely on just one energy source for the future. And the bottom line is this, we shouldn't have to choose between what's right for the environment and what families and businesses can actually afford. And with natural gas, you don't have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ventura. Now we have Janice Wise. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's so nice to see you. I'm here from Art Trek. We are your not-for-profit arts organization located right in Newberry Park. And we have an upcoming fundraiser. It's called Quick Draw. This is our second annual Quick Draw. We have nine artists coming into the studio. They have 90 minutes to create a piece of artwork, which you get to watch them do. This is on March 9th, so in the evening. And you get to watch them create for 90 minutes, and then when time is up, we raffle off those items. So it's a big fundraiser for us. It supports the work we do with cancer support community, senior concerns, Safe Passage, Commander Hagel's program, and a lot of other nonprofits that we work with. So we appreciate everything that you do for us and all the support that you give us, and we were hoping that you would come and attend this event. I have some postcards for you, too. Thank you.
Pass them out. We'll take them. Yeah, they'll get them to us. Thanks for coming out. Thank you to all our public speakers. Now we go to, oh, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Powers, take over. Answer Mr. Roberts' question.
Thank you so much, Mayor McCoy. In following up on just a couple of the public speakers, we'll continue to, continue to work on fundraising efforts, both through the library and otherwise with JD, and are appreciative of all his efforts in regards to raising money for fire and borderline victims. The gentleman, Mr. Roberts, who spoke on the Clean Power Alliance, we did have representatives from Clean Power at our previous, at our last meeting here to provide some additional clarity and answer questions. We know it is a complex item. Our deputy public works director, Cliff Finley, is right over here. He'll catch you and provide some answers out in the lobby. And then, in relation to Gas Company and Art Trek, we will do our best to help promote those activities. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. That'll take us to Item 7, the Consent Calendar. Are there any items to be polled, or do we have a motion? Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. If there is no items to poll, I move the Consent Calendar.
Madam Clerk, will you bring the vote together, please? Thank you.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right. There's no public hearing tonight, so Item Number 9, Department Reports, General Plan and Housing Element Update. Mark Towne, our Community Development Director, take it away. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So this item involves the idea of updating our Thousand Oaks General Plan and Housing Element. As you know, we have been discussing this topic quite a bit over the last year. In fact, tonight is the sixth time prior to this. We actually started this discussion back in March and discussed update parameters, and then we provided some options for council's consideration in May. In September, you authorized staff to solicit a request for proposals, to acquire proposals from consultant teams to update the general plan either comprehensively or in a focused manner. Those options were then consolidated, and in January this year, you selected Raimi Associates, who was the top candidate from that RFP process, to advise you in terms of general plan options, costs, benefits going forward. And then, of course, we had a study session on this topic on January 22nd. So again, just to refresh for a moment, the fundamental options before you tonight are a comprehensive update of the city's general plan, which would update all of the optional and required elements. The second option is what we've been terming a focused update, and that would update the land use element, circulation element, and housing element, and then any other required state changes in terms of our existing policies. The third option is to update only the housing element and those required state amendments. At the study session, city council identified the idea of a vote in terms of a potential component of this general plan update process. Subsequent to that discussion, staff evaluated a number of options in terms of a potential general plan vote. And one of the primary constraints that immediately became obvious was that it would be actually impossible to have a vote during the next two years roughly to enable the city to meet its October 2021 Housing Element Update deadline. As a result, after looking at a number of alternatives, staff identified the best option as to include consideration of a vote in 2022 after the general plan update was adopted, with the overarching goal of lowering the measuring baseline, which I'll talk about with the overarching goal of lowering the measure baseline, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Then also, I just wanted to mention that outreach is a key part of the general plan update process. No matter which path you choose to go down tonight, that's always part of the program. And we'll also talk about the idea of a statistically valid survey in a few minutes as well. This graphic, which is also included in your staff report, identifies basically the timelines for several of these options. The first option, Option A here, is that which was assembled by Ramion Associates. And basically, as you can see, this would start the process of either a comprehensive or a focused general plan update, literally in the next month, and then that would carry on through with the target date of submitting the housing element. Remember, we have to submit it by, actually, October of 2021, and so the draft general plan will be available for public review in the latter part of 2020, followed by the draft DIR, and then City Council action on the entire general plan, and then submittal of the housing element to meet the state deadline. Option B is what we were just talking about, what I was just talking about, and that is the idea of a ballot measure. And in this scenario, and this would apply to either the comprehensive or focused general plan update, we would go through the process, preparing a general plan update of one of those two types, going through the environmental analysis, and also submitting it by the October 2021 deadline, but then having a ballot measure for consideration the following June. It would actually be prepared for publication in June of 2022, and then actually have a vote in November of 2022. That way, you would still meet the deadline, and the public vote would be meaningful in the context of having a land-use map that could be considered in a manner that was used to consider the original Measure E back in 1996, which is based on the 1996 land-use map. The third option is the housing element option, and because it is more restricted in scope, we would not actually need to start that until, as you can see, the very end of this year, and then we would actually prepare an RFP in the interim, select a consultant, and start the actual work latter part of this year, and then proceed with City Council action on the housing element and those related state items prior to October 2021. Also wanted to mention, just for a moment, a few factors that are particularly relevant to Thousand Oaks. We've already covered the basic cost and benefits of general plan options, but there's a few that are particularly relevant, I think, to Thousand Oaks. One is that, as you know, City Council has been able to use the pre-screening process to ensure that community benefits are acquired through projects that need a general plan amendment. So if a general plan amendment is needed to either increase residential capacity or to change to residential capacity, you have the ability through that process to ensure that there's a high-quality design and that this community receives benefits. Through this next re-na-housing-element cycle, we will be required to place capacity literally on the ground through our land-use map, and once we do that, that pre-screening leverage that you have used the last couple of years will no longer be available. If we do proceed with a comprehensive or focused update, we would be able to create land-use policies and community benefit policies that would basically substitute for that pre-screening process because the general plan amendment would no longer be relevant, and we can still ensure that projects provide community benefit. The Item 1B here has to do with discretionary review, and that is that historically, the Planning Commission and City Council have been able to, when it's appropriate, to approve projects at less than the maximum density, less than the maximum capacity for that site, based on other neighborhood compatibility issues, aesthetic issues. But the state is increasingly requiring that cities in their review process focus much more heavily on items that are of public health or safety and not public welfare, e.g. compatibility or aesthetic issues, and also that city standards be objective to the greatest degree possible. If we do go forward with a comprehensive or focused update, we would craft policies for your consideration that would maintain that discretionary ability to the greatest extent possible in light of state law. And then finally, our general plan land-use map, as you know, is a result of our analysis in 2017 and last year, identified that the map that we use on a daily basis has a much greater capacity than is what, than what is actually on the ground. Through these first two options that are before you tonight, we would be able to look at the city's general plan land-use map comprehensively, reduce the capacity of that map, and bring it down to a level that is much closer to what we actually have in the field and what's appropriate for the community. This is important because the state has stated specifically and recently that they will be considering the general plan land-use map of cities and counties in their growth projections, so we want that map to be as accurate as possible. This is another table that is from your staff report, and I'll just go through it briefly. It identifies in terms of the columns from left to right, the comprehensive update option, the focused update option, and the housing element update option. And so just proceeding from left to right in terms of this table, as I mentioned earlier, the comprehensive update would update all of the elements required, an optional focus would literally focus on land-use, housing, circulation, and housing element, of course, housing. Staff time would be highest for the comprehensive update and proceed to a lower amount for the housing element. We would, however, have our resources augmented by a consultant team to help do the heavy lifting on the project. The project cost is highest for the comprehensive general plan update at $1.5 million. It decreases to $1.2 million for the focused update and to a range of approximately $300,000 to $750,000 for the housing element update, which again is required by the state every eight years. There is a range for the housing element option because, again, we haven't issued a request for proposals for that, so we don't have a specific number, but obviously, if you chose that option, we would do that. Then there's a few optional tasks, one of which I mentioned is the idea of a 2022 ballot initiative. We'd like your guidance on that tonight. And by the way, these optional tasks only apply to the focused or comprehensive options. Another option is that of an arts and culture element. This topic would, I think, be a great idea in terms of reflecting the community's existing emphasis on the arts. This complex is obviously, no pun intended, a concrete reflection of that with these performing arts theaters and the city's robust arts program. This would be an element that would focus on that, the relationship between arts and culture and all the other aspects of our community, and, as you can see, would be an additional cost, but a comparatively modest cost for the value, I think, of that element. This is an optional element, purely up to the council's discretion, of course. And then finally, if council so chooses, you can include a statistically valid survey in those first two options as well. So the fundamental decision before you tonight is that of a general plan update. Again, the three options, comprehensive, focused, or housing element. Should you choose one of the first two options, you would then tonight be actually appropriating the funds for that option. You would be hiring Ramion Associates through the contract for those options. Again, Ramion Associates came out on top in terms of our RFP process and was also selected by yourselves for the guidance at our study session. So you would be appropriating the money and approving the contract for that consultant team for either of the first two options, the housing element. If you chose that option, then we would be going out with an RFP to identify the most appropriate consultant or consultant team to do that and provide you with a cost estimate at a later date. Depending on what you do with that option, there's just, this is the last image, we, again, are asking for your consideration and direction. So we would like to know if you're interested in pursuing an arts and culture element of the general plan, if you're interested in a statistically valid survey as part of the outreach program. And then again, we're not asking for a definitive yea or nay on the ballot initiative tonight, but are asking for your guidance if you'd like staff to continue to evaluate elements that are related to that idea, scheduling, cost, and other related factors. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and to my left is Peter Gilli, Deputy Community Development Director, and Peter has been a lead on this project over the past year. So again, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Ms. Powers, you had a question?
Just a quick additional point based on Mr. Towne's presentation. This is our scheduled year for our community attitude survey, and we've actually, pending council's direction here, we've actually held back on what would normally be fielding that survey right around now in an opportunity to see which direction council ends up going so that we'll have, we already have the budget money appropriated for that, so we wouldn't have to duplicate that effort. So I just wanted to make sure I made that point so council was aware that we have that option in front of us. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Councilmember Adam, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to add on to what Drew just said. A statistically valid survey is just another word for an attitude survey, which we have had in the past, and if I recall, well, I wasn't around, but in the original general plan, they had an attitude survey as well. And so that's basically what it is, attitude survey conducted with the public, correct?
That's correct. It would just be conducted in a way that it is statistically valid and dependable with a certain range, within a certain range of error.
And we'd poll how many people generally?
In previous years, it's been 500.
500 people. Okay, very good. And just two other quick points. Throughout this whole process, if we go with the comprehensive, I presume Measure E is in effect just like always, the measure voted on by the people, housing density measure, that would be in effect throughout?
Correct. Measure E would continue in full effect throughout this process.
Okay, very good. And then just one other thing, I'm kind of curious, when we were presented with the comprehensive update, Ramion Associates listed a number of potential new elements in addition to arts and culture, green buildings, climate change, economic development. Is there any reason we singled out arts and culture versus some of the other options that we can look at? In fact, the Ramion report says these would all be included, climate change, green buildings, arts and culture, economic development.
So those would all be considered as part of the comprehensive update through the other elements? This is a topic that is really not addressed through our general plan today in any significant form.
So we could certainly consider, in addition to arts and culture, a few of the other ones on here, economic development, green buildings, climate change.
Absolutely. A couple of those are mandated by the state, climate change, et cetera, but the other sustainability, we can absolutely study.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McCoy. The question I wanted to ask as well is, when we heard from Ramion Associates, they said that it was an all-inclusive cost, so to speak, the approximate $1.5. So when I see $58,850 for arts and culture, is then that, just to clarify, on top of the $1.5? They couldn't just throw it in for good measure since we hired them previously, maybe?
I suppose we could talk to them about that.
Yeah.
But no, this was always an add-on.
Say that again?
It was always an add-on.
That was, okay.
And I think what I would add to that is, staff always, as we move forward, once you get direction from council, will do our best to negotiate a scope of work as inclusive as possible, and we'll see what components can come out in the end.
So healthy communities would then also be included? We would probably, if, the environmental justice?
Right. So we will look at healthy communities through the environmental justice requirement. It's almost synonymous. It's another term that many cities use to address the same issues.
Okay. And regarding Measure E, so the proposal would be to then have a vote after the general plan to accept, have voters accept the new baseline of Measure E?
That's probably the core of it, at least at this point, in terms of our analysis. It would be to adopt a new land-use map, because obviously Measure E is based on a land-use map that existed in 1996, and this would be a new, much more accurate land-use map. They would have a much lower capacity and more accurate land-use pattern for the city based on public input.
And what happens, I cannot foresee the future, what would happen if the residents of the voters would reject the ballot measure in 2022?
We would have to go back and revisit.
Well, I can answer that. The actual land-use map will be adopted by the city council as well, under the option for a ballot initiative. If the voters approve the general plan land-use map, then it's very similar to what Measure E is today, whereby the council could not make changes to the general plan land-use map that exceeded that baseline. If it was defeated by the voters, the land-use map is still valid, but the capacity under Measure E, I mean, the baseline under Measure E existing today would stay in place. Does that make sense? Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And the statistically valid survey, I have a question about that. That would cost about $35,000. Do we have any idea how detailed or deep it would be, how many voters it would reach? Because we have a city attitude survey which reaches 500 people, I think, via mail, is it? And then online, we have another few hundred, Mr. Powers?
So we have traditionally done the community attitude survey in twofold. The first is the statistically valid model, and that survey is 500, and then that gives us a margin of error. And that margin of error, I believe, off the top of my head, plus and minus, you know, 3% or 4%. And that is the one in which you can extrapolate to the broadness nature of the community because that's done by phone, and cellphone and home phone, and that is based on our community demographics. So they interview more than 500, but if you don't meet the demographic criteria that mirrors our community, they have to exclude some of those out. What we would seek to do in this situation, because of the broad nature of it, is to probably expand the number slightly higher to bring down that margin of error to, you know, maybe 3%, 3% plus or minus in some regard, but we would work with our survey consultant to do that. And in terms of depth, you know, I can't say with specificity right now, we'd work in conjunction with the survey consultant and Ramion Associates to identify a breadth of questions that will get at all of the various elements and all of the key components attached therein. And then from a sequencing standpoint, well, I would just have to work with the consultant about when that happens within the process, when's the best time to do it. Probably want to do some initial outreach efforts first to explain the undertaking and sort of build some additional community knowledge about what's happening before we engage in that.
Thank you. I could see maybe Ramion Associates throwing in the arts and culture element, but not necessarily the survey. So I'm wondering, can we use this year's city attitude survey to, for this particular project? Can we turn it into that?
Yeah, that was exactly my point. Part of the reason I chose to hold back is I knew this discussion was underway, and this could be a potential component, and that would be a net savings in regard to that.
Okay.
It's important enough to do it. So that being said, we may choose to augment the budget slightly in order, like I said, to increase that number of folks surveyed so we can bring down the margin of error. I failed to answer your second part of your question. As part of the survey, we do send a mail card to every resident in the community, and that gives them an opportunity to complete the same survey online. And oftentimes, because of the margin of error in the statistically valid version, that mirrors those results, but it gives everyone an opportunity to participate as well. It just doesn't have the same statistical validity as the other.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Jones? Your microphone?
My mic is on there. I'd just like to ask, Measure E was referred to, what is the number of units, what is the upper limit according to the evaluation of Measure E? Is there an upper limit of dwelling units allowable?
The 1996 general plan land use map identifies a maximum capacity of about 81,000 units.
And about how many dwelling units do we have at this time in the city?
Roughly 48,000, a little bit more.
So, that's an average of about three people per dwelling unit then?
Right, it's about 2.7.
Okay. The, in the first measure, Option A, would you describe again the level of public involvement in that if we choose Option A?
I'm gonna let Mr. Gilli respond.
So, under the comprehensive update, outreach is going to include a variety of methods. There'll be stakeholder meetings, there'll be a general plan committee that will have meetings, there will be pop-up workshops, there will be community forums and community workshops, and focus groups, and specific meetings with groups such as CRPD, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, Chamber of Commerce, major property owners, the university, school districts, major homeowners associations, affordable housing groups. It's really an exhaustive list to try to get out to as many of the groups in the community as possible.
Yeah, that's a larger list of different groups than we had originally, where the master plan was first developed. What time period would this involve to do all these outreach meetings, do you think?
It would start probably around May of this year and carry through in some form, almost through the whole process. The first part of the outreach will be about collecting feedback from the public.
About how many months, would you say?
It's roughly a two and a half year process, and I would say the outreach will probably be part of 18 to 24 of those months.
Is that right? Well, that'd be quite a lot of public input, wouldn't it? Can we adjust, in this process, the target of dwelling units relative to Measure E?
Adjust.
Yes. The, you say there's a possible 81,000 dwelling units, which is, you know, much too high, in my opinion. Is there any way to adjust that target level if we choose Option A?
Yes. I mean, one of the most important parts of the general plan update is that through public input, we would actually be updating and changing the general plan land use map. And a couple parts of that are that we would be reducing the capacity in areas that have already been developed, and then looking at areas that have not been fully developed or potential redevelopment areas, and looking at the capacity of those areas in terms of likely state mandates and community needs. So, it would bring the capacity down.
So, we would be on firm ground legally and process-wise if at the result of this two-year or more period, we felt that 81,000 was really out of place for our, what is it, 56 square miles or whatever?
That's correct.
With over 15,000 acres of open space. But we could, in other words, we would legally perform whatever duties we would have to perform to adjust that figure. Is that true?
Yes, we would.
Okay. I think that's it for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mark, just a quick question on my part, and then Councilmember Adam. With the governor's desire to have 3.5 million new housing units by 2025, and the state encroaching on our autonomy, challenging limited growth initiatives, would this general plan assist us in protecting what we hold dear?
Yes, I firmly believe that it would. It will give us an opportunity to craft policies, to update our land use map, that will give us the greatest control possible over our future. Again, a general plan update is intended to be valid over at least a 15-year horizon. And so, looking long-term and thinking comprehensively, it would give us the greatest control over our destiny.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm actually prepared to make a motion if, what?
We have a public speaker.
I thought we didn't have a speaker. We have one speaker.
We have one.
All right.
And Councilmember Bill de La Peña, too. You're good?
Got to hear the speaker first, yeah.
Councilmember Bill de La Peña?
Thank you. The question I have is, of course, we spoke previously that we would use our results from the visioning workshops to help us guide through this lengthy process. I also am excited that we will be connecting with various local groups to discuss this. What I liked in particular with the visioning projects or workshops is that all of the workshops and discussions were open to the public. There were not any individual meetings or one-on-one meetings, or just, you know, go from one HWA to another HWA, to another group, to another group. It was, they were all open to the public. Everybody could come, so everybody can hear what the other has to say. And I think that that is very important. Rather than scheduling, and I'm not sure if that was the plan, but rather than scheduling, for lack of a better word, private meetings with groups, I think it's important that everything is out in the open, that we continue to, or that we copy what we did with the visioning workshops. Thank you.
No? Okay. How do I get back here? I know we have a public comment, but I wonder if Councilmember Jones wanted to speak? No? Okay. Public comments, we have one. Chuck Cohen? Former mayor Cohen? Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just made a quick note. I have a little difficulty hearing in this room. My hearing aids are not as adequate as your voices, but, so I'm hopeful I picked up most of the information. What I wanted to say is this, just as I happen to be the signer of the original general plan, leave the three options that are on the table tonight to your trust and best judgment. With an open and well-ventilated process throughout this period, whichever of these choices you select, having full public input, I would hope that the final judgment on the general plan that is ultimately proposed to you by your chosen consultant would be the council's decision, and not a matter that would be attempted to be disseminated to an entire proposition and public ballot. I'm committed to representative government. I think that you are the elected representatives. I'm also committed to hoping that your, this whole process does not stagnate the current city needs to be able to deal with applications and projects and business of the city as this general plan review takes place. So, with those items in mind, I hope that you will move forward this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Councilmember Adam, do you have a motion?
I do, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
And I want to thank Chuck Cohen and my colleague Ed Jones, because both of you were the original signatories on the 1970 general plan, which has actually served us quite well. It's preserved open space, it's provided for housing, parks and recreation, transportation, did a wonderful job. But, you know, this is 2019 now, and we haven't had an update for quite some time. They're supposed to last about 15, 20 years, so we're probably overdue.
Forty-nine.
Yeah, is that what it is?
Forty-nine.
I just have to take a minute to share this with you. From the original general plan, there are a few things that were a little bit off from where we are today. For example, there were supposed to be 180,000 to 200,000 people in the Canejo Valley. Obviously, we didn't hit that. There could have been as many as 81,000 housing units. We didn't hit that. Are you ready for this? The median age in the Canejo Valley in 1969 was 22, 22 years old. And right now, we're 30% seniors, so that's changed a little bit. Manufacturing, 40% of the jobs are manufacturing with Northrop, IBM. Here's one for you, the Capitol Record Club, not in existence anymore, and we don't do that much in manufacturing. We were supposed to have an airport in the Tierra Raja Valley, and it was going to be connected by the Canejo Creek Freeway, which I think was what is now Highway 2023. The Jungle Center, Jungle, what was it called?
Jungleland.
Jungleland, pardon me, was supposed to be, end up as motels. So, that didn't work out either. But, oh, we were supposed to have a Thousand Oaks Junior College at Lindero Canyon. So, as you can see, there are parts of the plan that are a little bit out of date, and it really behooves us to bring this plan up to the 21st century. But wonderful job that you and your colleagues did to get us where we are. So, thank you so much for that. I got to say, I don't think the housing element is going to be adequate, nor do I think the focus is going to be adequate. There's just not enough public input. The difference in cost and time between the focused and the comprehensive is so small that, why wouldn't you do the comprehensive? Then we get all the elements, we get all the public input that we possibly could use and need. Measure E stays in effect. We can lower that residential capacity. You mentioned that, Ed, that our residential capacity is probably too high at 81,000. And I think that that's one of the reasons we're doing this, to make a more realistic residential capacity. We get the community input, we have fiscal sustainability, we look at our opportunity sites, where we want to build, whether it be the Boulevard, or the Kmart site, or the mall, all those things can be looked at. We look at our job situation. Do we want a biotech hub here in town? Biotech was never even mentioned in the original general plan. It didn't even exist at that time. So, there's a lot of reasons to do the comprehensive, and I think that gives us a chance to update all the elements, keep everything consistent. So, there's an element really for everybody. And I'm really looking forward to hearing the community input. It's going to be a great process. And so, I would move that, in fact, we do allocate the 1.5 to Ramey. And as far as the other issues, I would say that I definitely want to look at arts and culture, but I don't want to limit it to just arts and culture, because if you look at the sheet here, you know, as I mentioned, there's climate change we could look at, green building, especially economic development. So, why don't we keep an open mind and look at all these potential elements, including arts and culture? I would also say that the surveys, definitely a good idea. There was one done in 1970, an attitude survey, so we should do one now. And then as far as the vote, we're very early in the process, very early. I don't want to necessarily take the vote off the table, but, you know, let's see how the community input process goes. It's going to be very intense, we're going to get a lot of feedback from a lot of people. And, you know, I don't think we should make the vote mandatory at this point, but let's keep it on the table and see if, you know, it evolves into something like that. So, that would be my motion. 1.5 to Ramey, keep our minds open to all the potential new elements, not just arts and culture. Keep the vote on the table, but not make it mandatory, and definitely do the survey.
So, just for the record, it's 1A, B, and C on the staff recommendation. And then again, yes to 2A, yes to 2B, and wait and see on 2C.
Jeez, what's 2C?
The ballot initiative.
Yeah, I mean, I think so. It's not for three years. Let's see how it develops.
Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
We have a motion. Councilmember Bill de La Peña?
Yes. The question is, the question that I have is with, oh, my goodness, what was it now? Well, let me, I had it written down, but now I can't read my writing, so let me hold.
Well, if you remember, we'll come back to you. But Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, if you seconded motions here, I would second that. And since you don't, I won't. The, I did speak to one party about this, which I informed the assistant city manager. Am I supposed to announce that here orally tonight as well?
That's appropriate.
Yes, I spoke to Mr. Sean Maradian about this matter. Yeah, I entirely agree with what was just said. I was glad to hear the amount of community involvement. This is significantly more community involvement than we had in 67 through 1970, when Chuck and I were on the committee. So, I'm very comfortable that with all this community output, that we would really be acting in the community best interest. I've never favored such a high density as was described. It was my opinion that we're about where we forecast at the low end of the range. And we planned for the total Canejo Valley, and I won't take five minutes to explain the way we were incorporated, but suffice it to say that there were communities in Newberry Park that had tried to incorporate prior to our incorporation. And we did not include them, because we would have had to wait two years to do our incorporation, and we wanted to do it in 1964. And we were anticipating that Canejo Oaks, Lynn Ranch, Rolling Oaks, et cetera, would all, you know, want to come into the city. Well, they haven't as of now. So, that figure that I had in mind as the lower end of the range, we're about at that figure right now. That doesn't mean we can't grow a little bit, but that figure did include the entire Canejo Valley. Excuse me. And in conclusion, I would just say that I would be very happy to do it over again after 49 years. When you divide that into the cost, it's about $25,000 a year that this new survey or this new plan's measure, Option A, is going to involve. So, I heartily second it and look forward to voting for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. I'm sort of a process-driven person. I think that the process that we're looking at doing is the correct process. That process is key, though, that we have robust, very robust, public input on this. I can't emphasize that enough. If we do that aspect of it correctly, we'll get good input and we'll have a good result. A result of our process will also be, as Councilman Jones has pointed out, a resetting of an unrealistic number of 81,000 residential structures. As long as that number is out there, I think we are vulnerable to the state who says, well, your own general plan calls for a lot more housing than you currently have. That alone is a good reason to redo our general plan, so that we can reset that number. I did go to some of the seminars of California League of Cities, and believe me, the state is ready to tell us where we're going to put housing. All you need to do is look at the proposals that are being floated in the assembly, if you want to know what they're looking at. They are looking at mandating locations. So, whatever the result is, and I think the process we're going in with will result in this result, is that we will have a defensible position when it comes to the state. I think this is incumbent upon us to have that position already in place when we get our new RENA numbers in a few years. But apart from all of that, apart from the sort of the practical reasons for supporting the... the measure, as we've talked about, is that it gives the community the ability and the buy-in on a vision for the future, similar to what former Mayor Cohen and Councilman Jones did in 1970. The community was able to come together and see a vision for the future. As Councilman Adams pointed out, they didn't see all, their crystal ball wasn't totally clear in that they thought there was going to be a college, junior college here, or that there's businesses that weren't even dreamed of in those days. In the same way, we need to get everybody in our town now together to come up with a vision where we want to see our city be in 15 to 20 years. That is the real goal, I think, of what we're trying to do here, and I encourage everybody in the community, when the call comes to come down to a city meeting, or when the survey comes out, to please do your due diligence and contribute to what we are going to be doing for the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. Councilmember Builda Lepeña, did you remember what you wanted to ask?
I did, thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, the survey, the, we talked about perhaps using our city attitude survey to focus on the general plan, to save costs that way. I'm not sure, Mr. Adam, in your motion, exactly what your goal was regarding the survey.
My goal was to have one. But, yeah, if we can piggyback it on one that we're already doing, that's fine.
Okay.
Save a few dollars, absolutely. Just one way or another, we need to have one.
Okay. And then, the other question I have, probably more for the city attorney, is regarding Measure E. Once we have a new general plan, a brand-new land use map, it really makes the current Measure E moot, in a sense, because the baseline will be different.
So, yes, the baseline will be different, but Measure E is a valid law on the books of the city of Thousand Oaks. So, what that means is, again, when you're looking at what the capacity is of the current 1996 land use map of 81,000, any changes that is made by the council does not require a vote, as long as it's below that 81,000 capacity. Obviously, a comprehensive general plan would significantly reduce that. So, the likelihood of ever requiring a vote after this comprehensive general plan update is pretty nil. It's very unlikely to ever happen, because the capacity is going to be reduced so significantly.
And if we were to hold a ballot measure with the new baseline, then that would actually be substantial. That could guide us further into the future.
It could, it could. But that's, again, as Mr. Town elaborated, that's something that we can look, as we're going through a comprehensive general plan process, that's something we can look at while we're going through that process.
So, the goal was to have a vote perhaps by 2022, and we have to go through several processes to, in order to reach that. By not making a decision tonight or giving direction tonight, are we jeopardizing that particular date in 2022?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
There's plenty of time.
I would only add, with the governor and the state usurping our autonomy, this is a big spend, but it's one to protect the desires of the community, and I'm in favor of the motion. So, no more questions, I guess. Madam Clerk, would you put the vote together, according to Councilwoman Bradam? Motion?
The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Congratulations. And one last thing, just to add to that, the state will take every vacant lot we have without this general plan, and no idea what the state's going to do, so, that's just my two cents' worth.
I echo your comments, by the way. I echo your comments.
Oh, thank you. Item 9B, allocation approval, pre-screening request, initiation of general plan amendment, and concurrent processing of residential project at 3801 Maurice Drive. Applicant, Cohen Family Partnership. Mr. Town, you'll be covering that tonight as well, yes?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this item involves a pre-screening review of a project that is proposed at 3801 Maurice Drive, and this is before you tonight, because the property is currently designated for commercial purposes, and the property owner would like to consider residential going forward. And so, to enable that change in general plan, land use, we would need to allocate 50 units from the citywide measur-y capacity to this project. That's the first of three items before you tonight on this. Second is, if you do choose to allocate units, which basically starts the process, then the second part is to initiate an amendment to the general plan to change from the current designation of commercial to high-density residential, which is 15 to 30 dwelling units per net acre. And then, finally, the applicant has requested that you consider allowing them to go forward, again, if you allocate units to the property, with a concurrent processing of the entitlements and legislative actions, which is the general plan amendment and zone change. So, this image shows the location of the site. It's on the west side of Reno Road, sort of bracketed between Lynn and Kimber, in the southwest portion of the city. In terms of the background for this particular request, the application was submitted late last August. I already mentioned the general plan designation. It's also zoned for a neighborhood shopping center, as we discussed this tonight. The overall process, I think it's just relevant to spend a few moments on this. We are at the very beginning of a potential process. So, what's before you tonight is whether you want to even allocate those units to this property. We call that a pre-screen. If you greenlight this project to go through the process, it would then go through the normal process, which is outlined here, with a number of steps, including their formal application, environmental analysis, planning commission review, and then this whole circle would come back to you for final action on the project. If you decide to allow this project to go through the process, if you allocate the units, it does not, I repeat, does not denote that you are in any way obligated to approve this project at the other end of the process. The project design could change somewhat. You will have more information before you, due to the environmental analysis and planning commission review. So, tonight is just whether you want to allocate the units to the property and allow it to go forward. Now, let's zoom in a little bit closer. This is the property. It's at the northwest corner of Maurice Drive and Reno. And you can see the Albertson's Building right here, right next to it, in the commercial center to the north of it. The subject property is about 1.7 acres in size, and it's flat. I assume everybody knows the property, has been on site. This is the current land use designation. The red denotes commercial. As you can see, that commercial area extends up to Kimber. And then, surrounding this property are various residential land use designations that vary from very low-density to low-density, medium-density. What is proposed for your consideration is to change this 1.7-acre area to high-density. So, it would be the only high-density area in this area, but it would, of course, be residential in nature. So, the 50 units that I mentioned, just so you know, that represents about 4% of the citywide capacity that's available, and there would be a little over 1,300 units remaining if you were to make this allocation tonight. So, now, let's begin to talk about the actual concept itself. With this bird's-eye view, you can see that the concept involves basically five buildings, one larger one that's basically adjacent to the Albertson's Building, and then four smaller ones, three facing Maurice, and one facing Reno Road. This is the concept. Basically, it involves 10 townhomes, 37 apartments. The townhomes would be within those four buildings that I just mentioned. Now, we're looking north, so the buildings B, C, and D. And then, the apartments would be in that larger building, A, at the back of the property. And as you'll see in a moment, it's a mix of two- and three-story buildings in this When we look at a project in the context of pre-screening, we look at these four criteria, and we look at the same criteria for all such requests: suitability to the site for the proposed use, the design quality, the provision of regional housing needs, assessment units, that's a state-mandated housing number that we have to try to meet, and then community benefits. So, let's start with suitability to the site for residential use. When staff looked at the proposal and studied it, just at a very sort of 30,000-foot level, it seemed to staff that residential use at the site is more appropriate than commercial, more compatible with the residential to the south, and basically in the neighborhoods to both sides. The site is within walking distance, obviously, to commercial, but also to parks, bus stop, and nearby open space and trails, public trails. And it would add some diversity to the housing opportunities in the area. There are no apartments in this area. The nearest one is about a mile away, at Dos Fiantos, so it would add that housing option. In terms of the design quality, now, we're shifting to the second of those four factors, site plan. I won't get into the details, but in terms of the likely zone, if this goes forward, the layout of the site plan comports to the standards in the municipal code for paved area, open space area, structural coverage, et cetera. There are two common pool and playground areas. This is a playground area up here in the northeast corner, again, a common area, and then, over here, would be a pool and spa complex, which would be available to both the apartment residents and the town homeowners. Overall, the parking supply exceeds the requirements for the site, which are based on state This is, I think, a helpful cross-section showing a view with the Albertson's Building on the right, and then you can see the apartment building, the closest. On the left-hand side of this image, three stories over an underground parking layer or level. In terms of the apartment building, staff feels that the architecture is compatible with appropriate, in fact, this case, really significant articulation, varied roofline, as you can see in these elevations to the right. The top elevation are the east and west views. The middle elevation in this image is the south elevation. And if you look at the very bottom image here, this is now looking as if you were standing on Reno and looking west, so you have the Albertson's Building on the right, and you can see here, you have the apartments sort of behind the townhomes in the foreground, and at a height that is compatible with the height of the Albertson's structure. This is another view now of the townhomes, and the way that this concept works is that they are in both two- and three-story configurations, two-story on Reno, two- to three-story at the northwest corner of Reno and Maurice, and then three-story elements for the two townhome buildings on Maurice, on the west side of the property. So, when we look down here, just so we're really clear, so this is the Albertson's Building here on the right-hand side. This is the apartment building behind. That's the three-story building. These are the townhomes facing Reno, two stories. This is the corner building, two stories stepping up to three, and then three behind. So, that's how the height and story concept is laid out. We may see some minor setback deviations going forward, but believe that overall, this is, from a functional standpoint, a workable design. So, this is the site, looking northwest. Albertson's Building in the back, that large white, larger white building. And then, this is what the concept would look like. So, again, two-story townhome here to the right, two stepping up to three-story townhome here, and then two separate three-story townhome buildings to the left. So, again, just so we're all clear, this is it today, and this is the concept, based on a photo simulation. In terms of the third screening criteria, this regional housing needs assessment, as I mentioned before, it's a state-mandated housing requirement. We essentially receive a number eight, every eight years, where the city is mandated to meet that target, and it's broken down into different income categories. The applicant has offered to include five moderate-income units as part of this project, which is defined as 80 to 120% of Ventura County area median income, and to reserve three of those units for seniors. The final criterion is that of community benefits. And as I mentioned before, staff feels that overall residential use is a more appropriate site at that location than additional commercial. It would provide additional house stock and options for that neighborhood. The five moderate-income units do classify as affordable. They would not be market-rate, per se. And then, because the property is commercial, and because Measure E addresses both residential and commercial capacity, the conversion potentially from commercial to residential would actually put this acreage into the citywide pool for a commercial potential use, which currently has about four acres in that pool. So, should you decide to allocate units to the project, it starts the process. Again, as I graphically illustrated before, there are five more steps to go through. The applicant would be required to submit a formal application within one year, if you do allocate units. So, with that, staff's recommendation is that city council allocate the 50 units of the citywide residential capacity to the project, subject to that requirement that the applicant submit their application within a year, and also to initiate the general plan land use amendment, and also to allow concurrent processing of entitlements and the legislative requests. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and also, to my left, is Cory Finley, Senior Planner and Case Planner for this project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Town. We'll have council questions, and then we'll hear from the applicant. They'll have 15 minutes, then we'll have public comments, and then a five-minute rebuttal from the applicant. So, I open it up for questions from the council, and let's begin with Councilmember Builda Lepeña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Town. The, I'm not sure whether the applicant, I believe, it's when you and I actually toured the site yesterday, you mentioned that the applicant reached out to neighbors.
We were advised that the applicant had reached out to neighbors, and I'm sure that they can address that tonight.
Folks, it's okay. Well, you can express that when you come down and talk. We're just, the question was of Mr. Town, and please, tell us what you know when you come on up. We appreciate it.
Okay, so, I wasn't clear on that. I thought that the neighbors had been informed. Okay. Traffic. Making a decision tonight does not take into consideration any of the environmental impacts, because we don't know what they will be. What idea, if any, when you have 47 units, what kind of traffic in an intersection that residency is already congested? What might that be, just off the top of your head?
Well, the patterns from residential traffic are different from commercial traffic. Commercial traffic tends to be more evenly distributed. Residential traffic will have its, its peaks in the morning and, and evening commute times. But for anything beyond that, I'd have to turn to our, our coworkers in Public Works.
Cliff Finley, I'm a city engineer. As, as far as traffic, again, as you stated, we have not done a detailed evaluation. That will be done as, as the project, assuming it gets the allocation moves forward. But in general terms, that current use is commercial, and in a commercial zone, the, the traffic generated could actually be in total number of trips, very similar to that for the residential or the proposed project. Again, there's a, there's a wide spectrum of, depending on the use in a commercial zone, but that would be kind of where we are. We think it's going to be similar.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Finley. I was wondering, Mr. Town, did the applicant, or was it suggested to the applicant perhaps to go two stories rather than three?
We discussed two stories in terms of stepping up to the Albertson's building and stepping down toward Reno, including the northwest corner. We felt that three stories was, was reasonable for a portion of the property, given the height of the, the Albertson's building, so that the, the maximum height for the two structures is approximately the same.
And were you able to find a slide that shows apartments looking at the Albertson's roof or wall there? Did they provide anything like that?
We, we do not have that for your review tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, just a question about what is considered moderate income? And additionally, is that in the scope of what the governor is talking about, or is he talking about just low-income housing? Would this meet part of his goals?
So moderate-income housing is, is based on a percentage of a county-wide income level, a median income level. So it's 80 to 120% of the area-wide median income. So for, the area median is $96,000 for a family of four for Ventura County. So moderate income would range from approximately $81,000 to $115,000 annual income for a family of four. That's what it would.
Doesn't sound like we're in the range that the governor is.
So in terms of what the state requires through their housing allocation, we have to provide housing in, in four different categories: above moderate, moderate, low, and very low. And so right now, we have met our moderate income targets. We have met our above moderate income targets. We're still working on our low and very low income targets.
Okay. And just to have it understood by myself and everyone here tonight, this is a rather low level of approval, isn't it? I mean, this is sort of like, when I was with the county, we used to call it a red light, green light hearing. In other words, this isn't set in concrete, these pictures and levels. This could be moderated.
Correct.
A year from now or whenever this comes back.
Correct. This, this is, what's before you is a concept, and when we go through this step, we want a concept that is detailed enough so that we think the design actually functions, that actually works, that it meets our cities and, and states numerical quantitative standards, these types of things, driveway width and parking standards and things like that, but not get into too much detail, because you, it is a green light, red light decision for you tonight. Green light, it allows the project to go through the process, and it could easily be modified between tonight and the ultimate project that you see come back to you, in part based on your, your input tonight. We use the same scenario unfolded with Pinecrest, where it was going from a school to residential, and you asked that there be a significant affordable component for seniors, and they actually came back ultimately with a design that reflected that. So yes, it's, it's very early in the process. This is just whether this project goes through the process and gets the units it needs to make that land use change.
And this would be a maximum number of units? Is that it?
This is the concept that we see tonight of 47. The, the 50-unit allocation is based on the general plan land use change.
I see.
But I wouldn't anticipate there would be additional units because of the, the constraints in terms of parking and setbacks and things like that.
That would be up to discretion of the council a year from now or whenever this comes back.
Absolutely. And, and again, your decision will be illuminated by the environmental analysis and by planning commission's review in the interim.
You said illuminated, not eliminated, right?
Illuminated, not eliminated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember, councilmember Wrangler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Town, we are at the conceptual stage of this whole process. As we move forward, can you discuss a little bit how you would identify and try to mitigate any traffic issues that may exist at that corner or in the neighborhood? How would that process go about?
Well, we would, first of all, evaluate the project according to the California Environmental Quality Act, and the type of project that is ultimately proposed will drive that process to some degree. A key part of that analysis will be traffic. We will have a traffic expert look at the proposed project. They will look at the anticipated trips that would be generated by the, the planned land use, the distribution of those trips through a daily cycle. They'll look at the impacts on nearby intersections in terms of level of service, so that going forward, we would know if there were any significant impacts on local signals or other intersections. And if, and if there were such impacts, then mitigation measures would be considered to address them.
As you, as you go through that process, is there a way for the public to input with you on that? Is that a part of your process?
Oh, absolutely, right. So when we prepare or have a consultant prepare these, these analyses, they are made available for public review, and we respond to all comments on, on the document, whether it's what we call a mitigated negative declaration or an environmental impact report. There's a public review period. Public comments are received. Staff responds to each one of those comments.
Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. On that affordable housing issue, as a city, we are required to provide affordable housing, and it's based on certain income levels. And what we see tonight is moderate income, of which, if I'm not mistaken, we have a, we have reached our goals and we actually have a surplus, do we not?
That's correct. We currently have, have met roughly 300% of our moderate income target.
On the other hand, for the very low and low-income affordable housing, if I'm not mistaken, we're about 110 units short. Is that correct?
Correct. Right now, we, we have a need of 120 units, but assuming that the, that the 299 project goes forward, which has 11 very low income, then it brings that down to 109. It could be brought down further with the Pinecrest project, but that's.
Yes.
The, the credit is allocated at a later point in the process.
Okay. So it's safe to say, as a city, we're looking for very low and low com, low-income units, correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
No more questions from the council? All right, we will hear from the applicant. Just to give you fair warning, folks are concerned that they haven't been reached tonight, and would like it if you'd address that. And so welcome, Mr. Cohen. Come on up and share if you would.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Chuck Cohen, Thousand Oaks Boulevard, representing the Cohen family partnership and the owners of this property since the 1980s.
No relation?
No relation. Actually, Albert's father, Ned, is, goes by Cohan, C-O-H-A-N, so.
So he's Irish.
We don't even have the, the same spelling. It is a personal and professional pleasure this evening to appear before this relatively new council and to offer appreciation for your most diligent staff, Kari Finley, Kelvin Parker, and Mark Towne, who've reviewed parts of this project all the way through for the last six or seven months. And they have significantly improved the concepts that we brought before them initially, both functionally, aesthetically, and actually compatibly with the neighbors across Maurice Drive to the south. I heard vaguely, I heard some issues with regard to outreach, and I certainly will attend to the point that was raised by council member Bill De La Peña in just a moment. Your staff has accurately and concisely presented and portrayed these villas in their oral and written presentations tonight. Initially, we want you to know, we acknowledge that a positive outcome tonight is merely the opening first step toward project evaluation under city standards, ordinances and policies, and the California Environmental Quality Act. We understand that there is no reliance entitled under this practical pre-screen procedure that you have adopted. Further, we have related, set acknowledgement to our, I didn't personally, but Mr. Cohen has talked to many of the neighbors across Maurice Drive, actually over the past 11 or 12 years, since this, this concept of whether or not to use that parcel to do additional retail or to do some kind of a other more useful purpose now emanates. Present tonight with, with me are Albert Cohen, who is the, the family partnership general partner, project architect Tom Oswald, and Tom Cohen, all of whom will be available to answer specific questions that either I am not competent to do or that would augment my comments to you. You are aware, and we confirm, that the Cohan family is requesting consideration of a general plan amendment, a tentative set aside, a tentative set aside of 50 Mejere residential units from the citywide pool and concurrent processing. Essentially, we are bringing this assiduously, assiduously prepared concept plan and its elevations before you for your initial preliminary look, with the hope that you will find it worthy for filing and evaluation pursuant to standard city processing. Please know that we have closely followed prior council pre-screen hearing cases and believe that this, our project, although not within the Boulevard's specific plan and not containing vertical mixed use, but actually being on a site years earlier deemed to be appropriate for housing by, by city, city review, is of the quality and in line with those that you have allowed to advance to date. Actually, it is a horizontal hybrid of mixed-use retail and residential as the final piece, the final piece of the Cohan family Reno Road Plan. That was an 85-acre plan, which has evolved now with the Albertson Shopping Center housing to the south, and this, this final 1.67-acre parcel that has been left vacant. The, on the, on the west side of this property, I would call to your attention, is that there is land that is currently valuable to the entire watershed area and to the homes that are affected by that watershed area to the south and to the west by a flood control channel that was approved by the county flood, watershed protection district several years ago. That, that contribution of land by this family has not only allowed for that project to be, those projects to be made safer, but also created an issue with regard to the alignment of buildings on the shopping center property. And that's the reason that you have an L-shaped shopping center with the Albertson facing in a northerly direction. So now what we have is the culmination of, of actually, which you probably are, none of you would be aware of, was a, was a lawsuit that was filed almost 20 years ago, maybe even longer, between the family and the city with regard to the approval of the shopping center and some of the housing. This, this being the final piece, and this property could today be developed under its current zoning for retail. The reason that that's not happening and is not being presented to you is that Albert went to the neighbors across Maurice Drive, and I, I think at least on two or three occasions, these are not well-attended outreach meetings on the part of the, of the residents. I, I must tell you that. They've been invited, but there have been very few that have shown up at these meetings, and there have been multiple meetings over the last 12 years. At the, as a result of, of that meeting, as a result of that meeting, the neighbors were asked, what would they prefer to see on this, on this site? And the overwhelming answer was, we'd prefer to see housing, but slightly different, less expensive, and less, less of the same size and type as ours on the south side of Maurice Drive. So the, the reason that Albert deviated from the, the existing zoning of the property was to comply with the request of, of those homeowners. Now let me recite to you the many benefits of, of this proper, of this project. There will be a tasteful use of a graded nude-growth vacant fenced lot, the screening of the back blank wall of the market, the Albertson's building. There's a, a board here that shows that, and maybe Tom can show it, just. It was on your screen, but that's what the neighbors see today. There is a benefit from the needed residential units of a type and size preferred, as I said a moment ago, by the neighbor, neighbors who did in fact attend those meetings. There will be five Rena-compliant residences, two of which would be low, which are available to workforce. I mean, we're talking about schoolteachers and, and police, police officers and fire people, people in the, in the workforce at, at levels of income that need housing of this type. With no visual differentiation between those units and the, and the market rate units. There would also be three moderate, moderate apartment units that would be available on a exclusive basis to seniors for a period of, of runout time. Although, although these would be qualifying attractive buildings with full-size patios and decks, there's, there's no, there's been no effort to increase the density of this site. site beyond the allowance under the destiny designation requested. And so there's no bonus density being, that's involved here. But despite that, Mr. Cohen is offering these, these units that would normally be applicable under a bonus-density approach. And he's actually, Mr. Towne covered it, but the only concession that's being made, which is one of three that could be made under state, state regulation, is for a modification of, of the setbacks to allow for three of these buildings to be in excess of 25 feet There's a, you, you've heard about the amenities, I won't go back to, to repeat those, those are being provided here with, with this, this project. There is a, as you saw, let me show on the other board, the, the elevation and the, the architecture that Tom has put together here, showing the, the corner entrance piece, which doesn't exist today other than as a vacant lot, which will enhance the entrance to that, that entire neighborhood and, and make it much more appealing than it currently is. So with those benefits of this project and with the recognition that this is a process that is only just starting with a, an acceptance on the part of the council to move forward tonight, we, we offer this to the city and hope that you will find it worthy and that you will allow it to be a, a part of the legacy projects which sets Thousand Oaks apart from all other cities. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. So at this time, we're going to have public comments, and then following that, you'll have an opportunity for rebuttal. And folks, thank you for coming out tonight. This is very helpful for us as a council. Our desire is, obviously, this is a vacant lot and zone for commercial and desire to put residential, and you, like me, we live in that area, so we're anxious to hear from you. Our first speaker tonight will be Jared Frelick. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you to the council and for everyone for being here to share our thoughts as the community. This is the beginning of that process, but what I hear is that this really becomes that project. They're showing you pictures of that project to entice the council on what could be with that lot. And so I think that it's a reasonable decision for the council to make to not approve the allocation of those hours. What I liked actually about that picture that you showed was that there was a no queue of cars lined up going down Maurice, trying to get onto Reno Avenue. That was a beautiful picture, thank you. What I also noticed from the renderings is that they didn't include the queue of cars that would be on Maurice Drive with all those beautiful new townhomes and apartments. I live right off Maurice, which is a street that runs parallel to Reno, coming down, excuse me, on Fallbrook. Coming down Maurice, you have two streets that run parallel. You have Fallbrook to the left, you have Coldwater Creek to the right. And what happens is when you get a backup of cars on Maurice, people start filtering into these parallel streets so that they can get to the other exits on the opposite sides. One is Kimber on the opposite side of Fallbrook. I don't remember the name of the other street on the opposite side of Coldwater Creek, but what you're going to have is additional cars brought on by these additional 47 units, who will all have drivers, backing up Maurice Drive, which is a blinding from the light of the sun in the morning, going down these residential streets to alleviate and get to their places of business, their daycare, their schools as quickly as possible. The traffic situation for this project will be enormous. I'm glad that the city will do its part and look into that, but I think stop this now while we have the opportunity to not allocate those 50 units. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Folks, we got a, a lot of speakers tonight, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. And we, we recognize you're enthusiastic, but between the clapping, it's going to take quite a while, maybe smile or groan or something, but just the lengthy clapping, we get it, we know how you feel about it. So please be mindful of that, we're grateful you're here. Next speaker will be Skip Roberts. You got a twofer tonight.
My wife did.
All right. Well, you got three minutes. Thank you, sir.
So I support the allocation of, of the 50 units tonight and the consideration for the change in the designation on the parcel. Now parcels, I live out in that area. The parcel has been open for years, and it could use some attention, and residential would, I think, fit in there okay. Besides the back wall of Albertson's, the back part of that parcel has the service driveway that goes into the shopping center off of Maurice. And in fact, the 110 residential units that are on Fallbrook and in the Twin Oaks Homeowners' Association were all developed as a result of a court decision by a Solomon-like judge. When the city presented their case and Mr. Cohen presented his case, those 110 homes along Fallbrook and back on the backside back there are all on substandard-sized lots. The streets are all very, very small. The setbacks on the single-family detached homes are very close to, to those interior streets. Those streets are private. Fallbrook Avenue is a private street maintained by the Homeowners' Association, but it is open on both ends on Maurice and Kimber. At one point in time, the Homeowners' Association did explore the issue of providing some gates. The cross-traffic on Fallbrook Avenue that the Homeowner Association bears the responsibility for maintaining has always come, you know, from other people that are using those private streets to access back and forth. What else? Well, I think it'd be, it's a, you know, and there's, there's a strong amount of vegetation in the channel, in the flood control channel back there, sycamores, small oaks, and other things that would help offset in the future any height requirements that might be set upon when the project's finally developed. But I encourage you to put this project forward and do the amendment necessary and allocate the 50 units.
Thank you, sir. Next will be Melanie Rudis. Thank you for coming out tonight, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Melanie Rudis.
Can you pull that mic down so we can?
Thanks.
Perfect.
I have lived in the Kaneo Valley my entire life, so I have vivid memories of what it looked like in the 1980s. So some of what I'm hearing tonight is quite a concern to me. Thousand Oaks has always been slow growth, open space, and that's why we love living here. So the possibility of a three-story apartment building landing in our backyard was a bit of a shock when I found out about it not too many days ago. So I'm a teacher, I work in the Kaneo Valley Unified School District and have been for the last 14 years. I live a stone's throw away from the lot that we're talking about tonight, which borders on Maurice and Reno. In the last six months, I've been at the back of my house and I have heard two horrific accidents happen, just in the last six months. It's not a good intersection on a good day. I personally only go right out of that intersection because it's just not a really great intersection. So to put an influx of potentially, if you've got 50 units times, you know, maybe four people per unit, an influx of 200 people right there, it's just going to be a really dangerous situation. I just, you know, I've lived there for 12 years. I do remember someone coming to my door quite a while ago, maybe 10 years ago, saying, hey, would you like an apartment complex on this lot? And I said, no, I would not. And the same is true today. I feel like it's kind of a bait and switch because we like living where we live because it's not high-density. You know, at night, it's so peaceful, it's quiet, we can hear wildlife, we can hear coyotes, we can hear owls, we can hear crickets, and when you have the comings and goings of potentially 200 people, it's not going to feel the same, it's not going to sound the same. I'm a little bit surprised that Albertson's is not here, saying this is a no-go because that, that driveway that goes to the back of their stores where all their trucks unload, and that can get a little bit crowded on Tuesdays and Sundays when their load-in comes in. So if you maybe are, you know, fighting with like parking, they're going to have trouble getting their, you know, trucks in there as well. So 1.7 acres, it is not a lot of space. It is a small lot. So I was shocked when I found out they want to do all of that on this. It is not a big lot at all. So anyway, to see that we're going to potentially have a three-story high-rise or a three-story apartment complex right in our backyard, it's like a bad dream, honestly, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Little exercise there. Good evening.
Good evening, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
Public speaking's not my forte. Good evening, Mayor McCoy and City Council members. I'm here to state, today to state my opposition to Mr. Cohen's plans to turn a small 1.7-acre parcel of land into 50 residential units. I actually own two homes within blocks of this property, one in Twin Oaks and the other in Oak Creek Canyon. We already have serious parking issues in this local community, and addition of approximately 200 more residents within a tiny space is incomprehensible. A recent poll conducted on the Nextdoor app and the neighboring Cypress Watch community had over 85% people opposing this plan. My husband and I have lived there since 2010, and I never received an invitation to any meeting regarding this lot. The traffic at the corner of Maurice and, Maurice and Reno has already increased progressively since my husband and I moved here in 2010. Adding another 200 people will only increase traffic, noise and congestion. A complex of this size would generate approximately 120 more car trips per day around this corner. My grandfather had a house on 1.7 acres, and I can't imagine 200 people moving into his backyard. My husband and I specifically moved to Thousand Oaks from the South Bay due to the lower-density population here that appealed to us in the open space. My neighbors and I are seriously concerned about moving from a low-density-population community to a high-density one with more traffic, safety issues and noise. This land is not zoned for a three-story residential metrosity. I implore you to not be afraid of Mr. Cohen's threats to sue you if you don't rezone this land. Please listen to your constituents and vote against Mr. Cohen's plans. Thank you.
Thank you. You did well, don't worry. Brett Boynton. And then following him will be Barry, Billy Barron, excuse me, Billy Barron.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council members, good evening, good evening, city managers and staff and all in attendance.
Can you talk into the microphone? Thank you, sir.
Well, as a 17-year resident on Maurice Drive, only a few hundred yards away from the 1.7-acre lot, and I must repeat that again, it's a 1.7-acre lot. It is absolutely, I can't even wrap my mind around at least 200 cars in and out of there day and night. And this is just a real-life example before this high-density proposal. My wife and I, who live on Maurice Drive, just to turn left into our driveway, which should just be an easy task, many times, if we're lucky enough, to be able to pull over to let cars pass, because cars are already stacked up on Maurice Drive. The other day, because it was stacked up, we couldn't even pull into our driveway because of all of the traffic. Another car tried to go around and pass us because we had to wait for a family walking. So however this gets twisted or shown pictures, just please envision this. 1.7-acre parcel, a minimum of 200-plus cars in and out day and night, just think of the safety and visibility issues. I mean, it's, I mean, I can go on and take more of my time, but it's, it's really a non-starter. If you just, just as common decency, wrap your head around that thought. I mean, that much activity, cars, people, visibility issues, just channeled into not even two-acre parcel of land. I mean, I almost have to laugh. Thank you for your valuable time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next will be Billy Barron, and then following Mr. Barron will be Jennifer McLeod. Mr. Barron? No, 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 you take your time. We're happy to wait. Mr. Barron, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
If you want to take the other podium there, sir, the microphone would be better. Mr. Barron?
So?
If you'll just go this way?
This one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, I hate to be piling on here, and I think Mr. Cohen and his family have to be congratulated for one thing, on their foresight and their vision and everything they've done so far, but I'm not a fan of this project. And to repeat almost verbatim what people have been talking about, traffic on Maurice is really kind of bad news. It's recognized as a quick way to get around the stoplights on Kimber and the stoplight at Albertson's. People cut down there and then go over and, you know, even school mothers taking kids in and out of school. It's a good way to go. But about the housing project there, the proposed one, I'm concerned about the parking because that seems to be the base of the whole thing there. They've got underground parking, they say. Do they have underground parking for 47 cars? And if the people have two cars, twice that amount? It just poses an awful lot of problems that are way beyond that neighborhood there. I live in the Old Creek area there, been there since they built the houses. Nice, quiet little neighborhood, like it that way. I don't want a three-story apartment in my backyard. Didn't buy a house for that. And as far as the, the mix of the people that live in that area, we already have policemen, teachers, and medium-income people living in our area, and very quietly and happily. That's about it right there. I feel a little bit like the guys with Orville and Wilbur Wright when they were testing their airplane. One guy says the other one looks good, but it's going to ruin your buggy whip factory, and the other guy says, yeah, it'll scare the cows too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Thank you, sir. Jennifer McLeod. And then following Ms. McLeod will be Suzanne Barnesdale. Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for your time. I would also like to echo my concern and opposition. This area is next to an already congested two-lane road. One can hardly turn out of Maurice safely as it is. In addition, there are already cars from the Brighton Lane neighborhood parked next to this site due to lack of parking within the Brighton Lane neighborhood. Large produce trucks access the adjacent road delivering groceries day and night. Adding to the traffic and lack of parking with a high-density residential project is not appropriate or safe for this site. I find it hard to believe that the majority of neighbors who live in this area are asking for more traffic and less parking. I know, as a neighbor living there, I am certainly opposed to it, as are every neighbor that I've discussed this with is very concerned. Please don't approve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I like your shirt, by the way. T.O. Strong. Suzanne Barnesdale, followed by Eric Tremblay. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll make it short and sweet, because I can't say it any better than any of these folks have already said it.
Sure.
I'm just very strongly against this project. Thank you.
That was short and sweet. Thank you. Didn't even give Eric time to get down. After Eric will be Darren Hanson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Eric Tremblay. I live in Cypress, sorry, in the Twin Oak, Twin Oak community.
Check your driver's license.
This is my first time addressing you. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I really do enjoy being able to take part in the civic process. I guess my concerns and the things I'd like to bring up, I'm just kind of winging it like the old days of at Moore Park College in my public speaking class. I'd like to just thank you for your comments about really caring about the community and about having our opinion, and that our opinion should be mattered, because you are representative government. And the thing that I have a problem with is that we've been given no opportunity through a lack of outreach. I can't speak for the community directly across from the project, which is called, excuse me, the Oak Creek Community, but as far as Twin Oaks is concerned, which is just as far, we have a creek separating us versus a road from that project. We've been given no outreach and no opportunities. By happenstance that most of us have come together tonight to be here, and I think that that's very indicative of why it's very important to get that opportunity for us and the community members to have a voice, because you are representative of that. And my understanding is you just passed a motion to develop the plan for the city, which may include this parcel of land as well. And so I would encourage, if there's any vote, to be put off towards an opportunity when not only the public has had an opportunity to comment, but then you as well have done your due diligence in deciding what proper land uses are to include this particular section of lot. I appreciate the comments from Jeff and Melanie, and I forgot all your names already, but parking is an issue, and not only is it an issue, if you were to bring up that overhead view that you had of the plot of the proposed graphic, it would show that the access road for Albertsons is the primary means for the underground parking structure to have the residents of that structure to go in and out of that particular structure. And I think that's not appropriate. I think that would be someone else's call. But I purchased a house here because of the community that we live in, because of the layout of the community, and I think that having a high residential, high-density residential area in that particular part of our community would not be appropriate. I looked at the general rules and plans and policies and goals, and high-density structures and residential areas are supposed to be, from my understanding, close to the Ventura Freeway and close to the access points of that, where this is in the back half of Newbury Park. So that would be an issue as well. I have 19 seconds. Measure E, I think, also what would apply here, if you guys are going to vote for, that should also be a part of the public process, to vote for it as well. But thank you for your time.
Well done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Darren Hanson, followed by Suzanne Hanson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Darren Hanson. My home is located on 4112 Churchill Drive. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for almost 20 years. I'm not only here as a concerned resident, I'm also concerned as a professional in the apartment building industry. I live around the corner from this site. The proposal for high-density zone change and 30 units to the acre absolutely makes no sense for many reasons, and here are just a few. 30 units to the acre is not compatible with the neighborhood, period. The neighborhood is comprised with medium, low, and very low densities respectively. There are thousands of detached, single-family homes in this neighborhood, no apartments, no multifamily. But let's put this request in perspective according to the city general plan. I went onto Google and did some measurements. The first existing high-density property is 1.1 miles away from this site. It's in Dos Vientos, a master-planned community that prepared for density. The second is 2.23 miles away, which is at the corner of Ventu Park and Hillcrest Drive north of the 101 freeway. Besides Dos Vientos, there are only two apartment properties within a 2.23-mile radius of the proposed site. One is on Wendy, and the other one is on Borchardt, and these were built in the 70s and are only two stories in height. This proposal is a classic spot-zoning request, period. When it comes to height and the proposed building, three stories does not make sense as well. In fact, within two-and-a-half-mile radius, there's only one property that is three stories, only one, in two-and-a-half miles. Guess where that is? Dos Vientos. I'm not here to say the lander doesn't have a right to develop his land, because he does. However, their proposal must be compatible with the community in building height and density per acre. Tonight you heard from the developer that they are going to make a few units affordable for seniors and moderate-income families, and they're going to provide much-needed housing in the area. I applaud their efforts, however, not at the expense in the back of our community. And if the City Council agrees to let this development move forward with their requests, and I hope you don't, I ask that the developer be required to reach out to the community and meet with us, not just the required 500-foot radius and talk to a couple of the adjacent homeowners associations. I suggest a half-mile radius notification. If the developer does not meet to mitigate our concerns, I will personally get the word out, and trust me, this place will be very crowded. I appreciate all that you guys do for our city and how you make Thousand Oaks such a special place to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Thank you very much, sir. Suzanne Hanson, followed by John Kenyon. Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight.
Hi. Thank you. I wasn't really planning on speaking, and coming after my husband, that was a little, you know, he's very eloquent this way, because it's his business. He actually works and does a lot of low-income, senior housing and affordable housing, so he definitely knows where he's coming from. But I think everybody kind of does that is against this proposal, and I am against this development. I am also not against you developing this property. I think that ultimately it could be made into something quite useful for the community, but not what's proposed right now. That high density is a bit crazy. I used to work in new home development, so I, you know, I appreciate the Albertsons that you guys built and that we all use and enjoy, but the high density that they're talking about here is definitely not good. My son witnessed one of the accidents that is on that intersection between Maurice and Reno. It's just a really very tight corridor. I can't even imagine having that much more. I know that's kind of a typical argument against development is the traffic consideration, but this is really bad over there. So anyways, I just hope you guys can come up with something that would be, I think personally, more advantageous for everybody, but not with what it's proposed right now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
John Kenyon, you will bat cleanup. Navigate those stairs carefully. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council and Staff. I appreciate your, okay. I appreciate your time and listening to us. I guess as cleanup here, I'd just like to summarize what you've heard. I mean, you've stated that this is the beginning of a process. This is what kicks it off, and you see how many people are here already. If this continues, if this project continues, there's going to be a whole lot more people here. This is much more than your, what you were talking earlier, also about 500 people you're going to pull for the general plan, and that's like 2/10 of a percent of the people of Thousand Oaks. And I'm not sure what percentage we got here, but it seems like we at least meet that. So to summarize, we're concerned about traffic, because already trying to pull off of Maurice onto Reno is tough, because it's almost blind to your right side, and you've got two lanes of traffic coming towards you on the left side. There are times when I go out of my way to miss that intersection just because of the backup. Also, the other night, when I was coming home, I turned onto Maurice, and there were a whole line of cars already parked on Maurice right in front of this 1.6-acre parcel. So we've already got traffic, our parking problems there. And then all of the deliveries to Albertsons, the trucks come in onto Maurice and then into the alleyway and back up there as they're waiting to get unloaded. So not only is that a traffic problem, but think of the people there in the apartments. They're going to have these trucks lined up in their driveways next to their houses, waiting to unload. It doesn't look like a good solution, a good deal for the people that are already there or for the future residents. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon, for putting a caboose on the comment train. Speaking personally, I can't speak on behalf of the Council. I just wanted to commend all the public speakers for your civility, your clarity. This is local government at its best, and I want to say thank you, all of you, for coming out tonight. You did a great job. Now rebuttal. Yeah, clap for yourselves, because you deserve it. Rebuttal. Mr. Cohen? You've got five minutes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion that we recess for 10 minutes so that I may talk to my client? It was our impression that there had been sufficient outreach, that we were not going to hear the testimony that you received this evening. I think a lot of it has to do with traffic. A lot of it has to do with the fact that this property is going to be developed one way or the other, and that the traffic issue perhaps needs further attention. But I'd like the chance to talk with Mr. Cohen and come back to you in a few moments to finish the rebuttal.
Mr. Cohen, I think that's a wise suggestion. We'll take, not 10 minutes, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Jones. All right. Still with your rebuttal with the five-minute recess, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I want to personally apologize to these neighbors and to the council. We, I've been informed this evening that we did not reach out to the Twin Oaks Homeowners' Association group, which I think is the majority of the folks that were speaking here tonight. It is our intention to do that. We would ask that the council allow this matter to be continued until we've had an opportunity to meet and speak with these folks to see if we can come to a understanding that would make sense for both the property owner who has this commercial site as well as these folks that have lived there and want to have a high quality of life that we all agree with. So with that, I simply request the council continue this probably, I would suggest, 45 days.
Mr. Cohen, thank you very much, sir. Folks, I just want to commend you. That is the power of local government. Well done tonight. And, Mr. Cohen, thank you, sir. We have, we're looking for a motion, so I'm going to call on Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cohen, appreciate your reasonableness. Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for coming out this evening. I will move that we continue 9B to a time sometime in the future that's convenient for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, folks, please. Mr. Cohen, we encourage the outreach and we're grateful for your effort. And the folks are interested in talking with you. And so 45 days, we've got a motion. Madam Clerk, if you would--
I have a request to speak.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Jones.
Very quick. I would just say that I spoke to Mr. Cohen about this matter before the meeting tonight, and I am in support of the continuance.
All right. Thank you, sir. You want to recount it for me?
Yeah, just to clarify, the motion is to continue to a date uncertain so that staff has an opportunity to work with the developer on appropriate time to bring it back to the council.
That sums it up. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you put the vote together?
The motion carries 5-0.
Yep, they'll take care of it. All right, we are going to move on to item number 10, study session. In relation to citywide user fees, fines, penalties, rates, assessments, and doing that for us will be Jamie Boscarino. Thank you, folks. Have a good evening. Could you please exit quietly? Could you exit quietly? It's where you keep your voices down. It's kind of a novel concept. Thank you.
You ready?
Yep, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy, city council members. Tonight, we're here to hold a study session on the draft fiscal year 2019-20 and fiscal year 2020-21 user fees and development impact fees. I'm joined by Brent Sakaida, Budget Officer, who is instrumental in working with each department in preparing the draft user fees manual. The purpose of tonight's user fee study session is to review what a user fee is, including other various fee types that are also included in the user fees manual, as well as provide an overview on the document and the process that staff undertook to develop the draft user fees manual, including the proposed changes in fees for the next two fiscal years. This is a study session, so this is the opportunity for city council and the public to provide input on the draft user fees manual. Tonight kicks off the start of the city's fiscal year 2019-20 and fiscal year 2020-21 biennial budget process. Over the next few months, we will hold multiple study sessions to review user fees, the CIP budget and operating budget, prior to holding public hearings for adoption of the user fees and the budgets. The draft user fee manual includes 274 fees with over 700 subcomponent fee types. The fees comprise both development-related user fees and non-development-related user fees. The draft user fees were presented to the Finance Audit Committee for review and discussion on February 20th. Before we dive into the draft user fee manual, it's important to define what exactly is a user fee, which is distinctly different than a tax. So back in November 2010, the public voted on and approved Proposition 26, which is specifically defined what constituted a tax. The proposition defined a tax as any levy, charge, exaction of any kind imposed by a local government that doesn't meet one of the seven exceptions set forth in Proposition 26, whereas a fee, on the other hand, is charged to an individual or group that actually receives a private benefit from the service that is provided. A good example of this would be the city's library, which is funded both by taxes and by fees. The library itself provides a public benefit and thus is funded primarily by taxes. A homeowner in the city pays property taxes annually, of which a portion of their property taxes go to fund the city's library. A homeowner pays those taxes whether or not they actually receive a benefit or services from the library and whether they ever step foot inside the library. The library user fees included in this draft manual presented tonight, however, are only paid by individuals or groups that actually receive a benefit or a service from the fee they pay, such as a rental of a library meeting room or the use of a copier. It's important to know the difference between the two, as taxes can only be approved by a vote of the people, either by simple majority for a general tax or by a two-thirds majority if it's a special tax. However, fees can be approved by a two-thirds vote of city council. As mentioned, there are seven exceptions in Proposition 26 to a tax. The first exception is the specific benefit or privilege, an example of which is a fee charged for a restricted parking permit. The second exception is the specific government service or product, which is a charge only paid by individuals that request that service. The library copying fee I mentioned previously is a good example of that type of exception. The regulatory charges exception is a fee charged to regulate a specific business, such as taxi operators, as staff incur costs to ensure that the business meets specific regulatory requirements and issue licenses. The fourth is user charges, which is a specific regulatory, oh, sorry, the fourth is user charges, which is a charge for the use of entrance to a government property, such as the rental of library meeting room. And the fifth are fines and penalties, such as parking citations. The sixth is developer charges, which are charges imposed as a condition of development, plan check fees, building permit fees. And the seventh exception is the benefit assessments and property-related charges, which are governed by Proposition 218. This includes the city's lighting and landscaping assessment districts and the water and wastewater utility rates. So in order for a fee to be actually considered a fee and not a tax and able to be approved by city council, it must meet one of these seven exceptions that we just covered. It also must be based on the cost of the service provided. The government can't make money off of the fee, only recover its costs. It must specifically benefit those who pay the charge. It must not unintentionally be subsidized. The city does have several fees that are intentionally subsidized, as we will cover later tonight, but we don't unintentionally subsidize any fees. It must be reasonable. A good way to ensure reasonableness is by periodically benchmarking fees against other agencies. And the last time that we did this was when we did our full cost study in 2013. And it must not be arbitrary. There has to be a basis for charging the amount of the fee. When examining taxes versus fees, the funding source for the specific service or benefit provided can vary. Some services are funded 100% by fees if they're completely for a private benefit. Some are 100% based on taxes if they're solely for a public benefit, while some services could be a combination of both taxes and fees if they're partially for private benefit and partially for public benefit. A good example of this would be an advanced planning fee. If the city were to charge this type of fee, it would be based on a rate to pay for a portion of the service that is related to the private benefit, while the rest of the service would be funded by taxes. So now that we've covered the background, I want to switch gears to the draft user fee manual. It's composed of development and non-development user fees. The fees cover services from each department, such as various building permit fees and rental of city facilities. Developer charges are also included, and these are development impact fees, which are governed under the Mitigation Fee Act, AB 1600. It also includes fines and penalties, rates and charges for water and wastewater utilities, and assessments for lighting and landscaping districts. The draft manual is broken out into two different sections. The first section includes a fee detail sheet for each user fee. The fee detail sheet includes such information as the fee title, the department, the fee structure, and the specific Proposition 26 exception. This sheet would also specify if someone other than city council has the authority to waive the fee. For almost all fees, only city council can approve a waiver. However, for a few fees, the fee detail sheet might list the department director as having authority to waive a fee, such as the library director may waive library fines. The second section of the manual includes the comparison of the current 2017 adopted user fees to the 2019 draft user fees. In addition, there are no new fees being requested in the proposed draft. Development-related fees were last comprehensively reviewed in 2013 with a full cost of service study. Best practices are that the cost of service study is completed every five to seven years. The study is performed in conjunction with a consultant and evaluates city services by taking a comprehensive look at staffing costs, at time estimates of providing the service, and at overhead. Prior to that, CDD building and safety fees were reviewed in 2010, planning code compliance and engineering fees were reviewed in 2007, and a citywide study was performed in 1999. The results of the 2013 development-related fee summary showed that a majority of development-related fees are below full cost recovery. The current strategy is to increase selected development-related fees by CPI annually and then conduct a full cost study in fiscal year 2019-20, since it will have been seven years since the prior fee study at that point. The CPI of 3.2% is based on the United States Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics, Los Angeles Riverside, Orange County, for all expenditure categories calculated from December 2017 to December 2018. In addition, there are 16 fees that city council has specifically provided as exceptions to full cost recovery. City council's policy is that certain fees are not to be at full cost recovery. As mentioned, there are 16 fees that city council has decided are the exception. Fees that are of a community-wide benefit and fees where the use of tax revenue would be appropriate for community-wide service are those types of fees that city council has specified as the exception to full cost recovery. The next few slides provide the list of the 16 fees that city council has established as exceptions to full cost recovery. The current fee and the proposed fee amounts are included for reference, and those fees that are being proposed to increase are being increased based on the CPI. Some of the fees are those that residential homeowners would be paying. Over the past several months, staff has reviewed the current user fees and any changes in services and developing the draft user fees. Of the 274 fees, 149 or over half of fees are not being recommended for a change in the fee. 125 are being recommended for a change in the fee. The majority of these fee changes are to increase by the CPI of 3.2%. One fee that is recommended to be eliminated is the scanning fee at the library. As mentioned previously, the second section of the draft manual compares the 2017 fee current cost to the 2019 proposed fee. For fees that aren't recommended to change, there could be a variety of reasons that staff is not recommending a change at this time. The fee could already be at full cost recovery. It could be a rental fee, so there's no basis for a change at this time. For example, the returned item fee charged for payments deposited with the city that are returned by the bank is not being recommended for a change, as there's no change in what the bank is charging us for returned items. Also included in the user fee manual are development impact fees. These are fees that are governed by the Mitigation Fee Act, AB 1600, and are charged to new development to pay for the required capital improvement infrastructure costs arising from the development project. These include road and traffic fees, water and wastewater plant improvement and connection fees, and facility fee. Per AB 1600, the city is required to annually report to city council the revenue and expenditures that were collected and paid out during that year associated with the development impact fees. If for some reason the city did not utilize the fees that were collected for an infrastructure improvement project as part of a development, the fee is required to be refunded to the developer. Public Works will be returning in April with the traffic impact fees, and any changes in water, wastewater, plant improvement, connection fees would be included as part of the water and wastewater financial plans and rate development process this summer. The police facilities fee is a fee charged to reimburse the city for advancing funds for its share of the construction of the East Valley Law Enforcement Facility. The proposed adjustment is 1.12% based on the city's five-year investment returns per the agreement. Staff is currently in the process of working with its consultant to update the water and wastewater financial plans and develop rates for calendar year 2020 and 2021. Staff will return to city council this summer, as I mentioned, with the draft financial plans and rates. Rate development and approval is governed under Proposition 218. So tonight's recommendations are to receive the information on the user fees and police facilities fee as presented and provide any direct-- facilities fee as presented and provide any direction to staff, as well as schedule a public hearing for April 23, 2019, to hear the final user fees adjustments. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and staff from other departments are also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bascarrino. Just to remind the council, we're not voting on the user fees tonight. We're just going to schedule a public hearing for them. And so if you have any questions for the staff? Councilmember Adam?
Well, it's more just a quick comment. I'm glad to see that we're going to work with a consultant about a comprehensive cost study, because it's always been the policy of the council to go for full cost recovery where we can. I know there's some situations where we just can't. I understand that. But I think that's going to be worthwhile to do, because just for the public to know, when we don't get full cost recovery for a fee, the difference comes out of the general fund, which is what your taxpayer dollars. So it makes sense for us to try to get full cost recovery when we can, so let's work with that consultant and see what we can do. Thanks.
Would you like to -- we don't need a motion. We're just going to vote on it, correct? Yeah. You want to do a motion with that, Councilmember Adam?
Oh, yes, I will.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Motion to receive the report and schedule the hearing for April 23.
Madam Clerk, will you put together the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
All right. Nothing for item 11. Nothing for item 12. Brings us to item 13. Council issues recommendations. Motion to rescind February 12, 2019 vote approving Planning Commission and Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission appointments. Would you like to introduce this item, Councilmember Builda La Peña?
Yes, thank you, Mayor McCoy. Last council meeting, February 12, we all voted on basically two slates altogether. Traffic Commissioners won, and then Planning Commissioners won, and it was unanimous vote. I did receive additional information after the vote, which caused me to reconsider my vote, and so I would like to ask to re- to rescind the vote for February 12 so that I can correct my vote from February 12 regarding Planning Commissioners. So I would like to move to rescind the vote for February 12, and then after that, we would be able to simply revote the way we did on February 12, in addition to my correction.
Councilmember Adam, you had a question?
Well, I have a comment to the motion. In all candor, I don't really feel a particular need to rescind my vote. I'm perfectly content and happy with the way I voted, including my vote for your commissioner. So it's not like I feel like I voted incorrectly or anything like that.
No, I'm the one who voted incorrectly.
I understand that, but you're asking us all to rescind our votes. But as an accommodation to you, I will -- I presume you're making a motion to do that?
I already did, yes.
Yeah. As an accommodation, I will support that motion, but I have to make one thing clear. Have to make one thing very clear. This business about learning new information that you say that you did, the public has to understand that picking a planning commissioner or a traffic commissioner for that point is a very transparent process, extremely transparent. We had 17 planning commissioner nominee applicants. All those applications were online and available to the council members to review, including Kevin Cohen, who was my ultimate pick, number one. Number two, all those applicants were available to be interviewed by council members face to face to ascertain information about whether or not they, you know, would meet your approval. So with that in mind, after the vote, there was no additional information that came forward about any of the nominees. So this implication that somehow something was withheld or not transparent just is not accurate.
If you -- I thank you for your feedback. I don't think I said that information was withheld.
No, well, but you said you learned additional information afterwards.
I learned additional information because the resume, which was available to council members, not to the public. The public only learned of the resumes on -- at 5:00 PM on the Thursday.
Well, that may be, but we're not talking about the public here. We're talking about council members that had to make a vote.
Yeah, council members, yes. And I, for the first time, did not read the resume.
Okay.
So the information was there, and I'd like to correct that.
Okay. Well, I think that's a salient point. You failed to read the resume, therefore your vote was not as informed as perhaps it could have been. Because what I'm saying to you is, all the information was out there for everyone to make an informed vote about every single applicant, and after the vote, no new information came forward that would necessitate rethinking your vote for any of us. Well, I can't speak for everybody, but certainly not for me. Okay? Just there was no new information that came out.
No, the only new information that wasn't in the staff report was the applicant's appearance before the council in favor of a high-density project. That was the information that was not in the packet. So -- but I had not read his resume.
Okay.
So therefore, I respectfully request.
Okay. Well, I'll respond to that as well. That may not have been -- there was no reason for that to have been in the packet, but I know for a fact that you were aware of that.
I was, yes.
You were aware of that before your vote, so that was another piece of information that you had. So I'm just trying to be fair here, Claudia, that's all. Trying to be fair to the applicant, trying to be fair to all future applicants, too.
And, yes.
That all the information you needed for a vote was available to you.
And you made that abundantly clear, and I never made a claim that it wasn't available.
Well, you said you learned new information.
It was new to me.
New to you?
Yes.
But available to all of us?
Yes.
Okay. If we just, you know, trying to be nice here, but just want the public -- it's the public that I want to understand that, again, this is a transparent process with information available to all council members. There's no attempts to withhold anything, and there's no new information.
And those claims were not made.
Okay. I understand that. Just want the public to understand that.
Those claims you're making.
And there was no question of new information that came out afterwards. But anyway, I, as a council member, I presume we have to vote on this motion, and I will support it as an accommodation to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other council members wish to speak? I would add that I want to be very cautious in a city that has amazing volunteers that are willing to be interviewed and apply for these positions, and I'm hesitant to participate in a litmus test that would frighten any of our citizens from applying. And to change a vote, it's troublesome for me, candidly. Out of respect for you, I will honor it, but I'm troubled by it. And so with that being said, if there's no other council members that wish to speak, Madam Clerk, will you please put forward the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
That will bring us to recommendation number two and three, now that we're going to vote again, I presume.
Yes.
And so we're going to vote item by item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So thank you for the accommodation. I appreciate that very much. I don't normally do this. I don't think I've done this before ever, and I appreciate giving the opportunity to correct a vote that I think was my mistake, and I have said so. I'm not claiming that there was no transparency at all. The first vote, I think, would be 2A on Mr. Adams, Planning Commissioner Kevin Cohen. I'm going in order here.
Yes. Okay. Then let's put forward the vote. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since we're going through this process, I feel it behooves me to make the public a little more familiar with my nominee, since he seems to be the one that's in the spotlight here.
Yeah.
Just take a moment, if I may.
Go ahead.
Kevin Cohen was not known to me before this process began. I've never met the young man. He didn't work on my campaign, so there's no question of that. But I did interview him, and he is an environmental planner. He actually works in environmental compliance. He makes sure that developments, whether they're public or private, comply with environmental standards. He works on green infrastructure, water usage, open space protection, stream beds, sustainable planning, endangered species, wetlands, air quality. All these categories appeal to me because we will be facing some development in the future, and I've always wanted it to be environmentally compatible. As we had our discussions, he convinced me that he saw the balance between the environment and growth, and that was important to him. Plus, he's a young man who, as he stated to me, will represent what he feels is the underrepresented young business people here in town. He's a millennial. I'm a baby boomer. I'm not going to be around forever, and we need to bring the next generation up, and that's another reason that Kevin's application appealed to me. As far as the future, just like any planning commissioner or any city council member, if there's a conflict of interest, there'll be a recusal. I've recused myself twice so far in my little career here as a planning commissioner. I don't think I did as a city council member. My fellow council member, Claudia Builda La Peña, recused herself once when it came to the Los Robles Hospital business. I mean, this happens. It's inevitable. But that's why we have the process. We have a recusal process if there's a conflict of interest. I'm quite confident that going forward, we will not see any of these conflicts of interest, and Mr. Cohen will do an excellent job in evaluating projects, making sure they're environmentally compliant, and also bringing a younger voice to the city, which we really, really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Adam. Councilman Engler?
I would just like to tag along with Councilman Adam. I did make an effort to talk to as many of the applicants as I could. Mr. Cohen was very impressive. I thought he was a very good candidate. He does have -- he does bring experience in the business to that -- to the table, and that is a two-edged sword. Does have some experience in the business, but he also has some need to be very aware of his biases one way or the other. He -- but he's a very impressive candidate. I agree with your choice on him, and I'm glad that you nominated him. Thank you.
I would, since there's no other comments, I would -- well, Councilmember Jones.
Yes, I wondered if Claudia -- I don't want to put her on the spot, Claudia or Councilwoman Builda La Peña. I wondered if she wanted to express any feelings relative to this, so I can make a more informed
Yes. I also, to clarify something that was mentioned about recusing yourself. I did recuse myself twice. First time, I believe, was because slurry work was being done in my neighborhood, and so legally I had to recuse myself, as have other council members. The second time, I was legally not at all required to recuse myself. I did so because I felt that I had to when Los Robles came before the city with a parking structure. My husband is a physician. I did not need to recuse myself. I did it because I thought it was the right thing to do. So just because it's legal does not mean that it is ethical. And what I would like to do, the reason I'm doing this tonight simply is to change my vote, not to a no vote, because I didn't do that with a previous planning commissioner who's also tied to the industry. I simply abstained because I said then, and I will say tonight, I have -- I will not vote no on anyone, on another council member's commissioner. I will simply abstain if I feel that it doesn't rise to my level of ethics regarding appearance of a conflict of interest. So when somebody is in the development industry, then, which is the industry that we, for lack of a better word, regulate now, is on the planning commission, then, you know, to me that is a little -- I'm uncomfortable with that. It's legal, perfectly legal, but I'm uncomfortable with that, and therefore I would abstain from voting, not to vote no at all, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I just would like to add a little to that, if I may. I did not interview this gentleman, but I read the packet material very carefully, and just saying that, I understand if he's ever called upon in his role as a planning commissioner to rule on any item that he's either professionally or financially involved with, I would hope that staff in the proper way would, if he's not aware of it already, would make him aware that it is appropriate to recuse himself if that situation arises. I presume maybe staff has done that already. But I would have liked to have had a man with this knowledge to be with us many years ago when we were planning this city. Of course, we didn't have environmental impact reports then, but I would think this man would have a wealth of talent and experience and knowledge that would be a great benefit to people who want to make an informed decision. And I believe having a man with this talent and background and knowledge on the planning commission would be a positive thing, with a stipulation, as I've mentioned, that he would recuse himself if there were any professional or financial conflicts. And I say I believe staff would probably, Mr. City Manager, he would probably be made aware of that. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, we actually have an attorney that is assigned to the planning commission, one of our deputy city attorneys, and their -- one of their primary tasks is to ensure compliance with that. So they vet out that issue very carefully, depending on items coming forward.
Well, I'm satisfied with that, and I intend to vote for Mr. Adams' recommendation.
I'll conclude the comments by simply stating that as elected, as city council members, we are given political appointments, both to the traffic commission and also to the planning commission. That's reflective of the constituents that voted for us. I have feelings, strong feelings, in relation to your planning commissioner, but out of respect for you, I vote yes, because that is your prerogative to appoint your commissioner. I understand that you seek to abstain, but to rescind the vote, this whole thing is a struggle for me, council member, and I don't want this to be a litmus test for all the volunteers in this community that feel the only way they can come forward without getting a public examination for an appointment that is by due diligence done by all the council members. I just don't think it's fair to the community that these folks that volunteer their time, because there's a litmus test in some capacity, I don't think it's fair. I will vote yes for yours. I will vote yes for his, and the constituents that elected both of you will decide whether or not you've done a good job. That's my position on this. These are political appointments granted by those who've been elected by the community, and you're going to rise and fall based on that decision. So I'll support yours fervently, and I'm going to support yours and anyone else's because I know you've done due diligence. I don't want a narrative driven by folks in the community that feel as though there needs to be a litmus test for anyone who wants to volunteer for one of these positions. If you want to comment to that, I understand, but I want you to know I support your candidate and wholeheartedly, because I support you, and I'm behind you. Okay? Okay?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. I understand where you're coming from. It is a little bit more complicated for me, because we've been having planning commissioners for decades now. I've seen planning commissioners come and go, and there are so many people in the community who want to volunteer, who have no ties directly or indirectly to the development industry that could volunteer and are available. It's impressive to read a resume of a senior environmental planner, but we have staff to do the work, that type of work for us. In the past, we have appointed homemakers, business owners, dentists, all kinds of other people that did not have a tie, professional, financial, or otherwise, to projects that might be built or will be built in the City of Thousand Oaks. So this is new. This is something new for the City of Thousand Oaks, and I feel uncomfortable with that, and I appreciate your accommodating my concern.
Okay. So with that, one more. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Not to draw this out, however...
Councilman Adam?
I've been around a long time, and I've seen a lot of planning commissioners come and go. And yeah, there's been some housewives, I suppose, or some so-called neutral people. But there've been a lot of people that have whatever you want to call it, ties to the community, that, you know, may not be what a housewife would have. I mean, I can name some. There's been land use attorneys. There's been property managers. There's been realtors. There's been business owners. There's been the head of the area housing authority was a planning commissioner. I myself happen to work for a large bank, and if... And we happen to do business with that bank, and if there was ever a vote that came up that had to do with that bank, I would have to recuse myself. So my point being is that, yeah, we may find someone who's absolutely completely neutral, but the history of that does not necessarily illustrate that. As I just stated, all these different folks with all these different occupations that could be construed one way or another. I'll leave it at that.
All right. I think we've expressed ourselves. Anyone else have a desire? Okay. With that being said, we're going to vote on the following planning commission appointments individually, beginning with Kevin Cohen. Councilmember Adam, your appointment for term ending December 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please put forward the vote?
If I could please get a clarification on the motion, the maker of the motion?
Yeah, I just need someone to make a motion to vote individually. That's all I need. It can be. It can be.
Okay. Councilmember?
I can certainly move to... I guess I could...
To vote on? Individually.
Individually.
That's it.
Yes, that's it.
Each one.
Okay.
We vote on that? Okay.
Now, what is this motion right now?
Oh.
So this is a motion to vote on each one individually, so let's start with Kevin Cohen.
Actually, this vote currently, 13A, is a motion to rescind February 12th vote. That's what you put up.
No, we've already done that.
You have to do the next one.
So let's just take it one at a time.
Is this... Are we going to do this orally?
No, no. Just be patient. She's working it out.
So the first vote will be for Mr. Cohen. Sorry. The first vote will be for Mr. Cohen.
Sounds orally to me.
I just want to make sure that normally do it with the... Somebody makes a motion to appoint.
You want the...
Yes.
Each one?
We have to vote for the specific motion.
I will move that we appoint Mr. Kevin Cohen as Planning Commissioner, term ending
Thank you, Councilmember Engler. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion carries 4-0, with Councilmember Builda La Peña abstaining.
Mayor, I'd like to move again.
Yeah, go ahead. You can do them all if you'd like.
I figured we could just...
You're on a roll.
Work down the line here.
Take it.
I move that we appoint Nelson Bus to the planning commission, term ending in 2022.
The motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I further move that we appoint David Newman to the planning commission for term ending in 2022.
The motion carries 5-0.
And, Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Sharon McMahon to the planning commission for term ending in 2022.
The motion carries 5-0.
Would you like to make a motion for the entirety of the slate of the traffic commission?
I'll make a motion for the entire slate of the planning commission, of the transportation...
Councilmember Engler, you were slow at the draw. Congratulations, Councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk?
Do I win something?
You do. You get a cup of coffee.
The motion passes 5-0.
I'm the champion motion maker.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Builda La Peña?
I just wanted to thank you again. I know this was especially for you difficult. I know you struggled with that. I struggled with it myself. And I'm glad to have had the opportunity to correct my, what I think was my mistake. And there are concerns regarding recusals and so forth, decorum, opinions, and it would be a move to remind all of our commissioners, traffic and transportation, to maintain decorum when using social media especially, and to also maintain decorum when addressing other legislative bodies, or to enter into an area of policy that is not their responsibility. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. City Manager, you have any follow-up items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor McCoy. Just a reminder that we do have a meeting again next week, back-to-back weeks. So next week is the 5th of March. We currently have one special presentation from Five Star Theatricals, followed by a series of departmental reports and urgency ordinance regarding small cell facilities, a update on our general plan housing element, annual progress report, update on fire recovery efforts and status there, and an item on the wastewater main extension project on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. That meeting is again next week, Tuesday night, the 5th of March. That's all.
And that concludes our meeting. We will adjourn until our regular meeting of March 5th, 2019. Good night, everybody.